Well, welcome. It's the first time in years that we are back in session face to face. What kind of nice experience? Yeah, Mrs. O'Kelly says more than years. Welcome to our about two weeks of regular meetings for presentation. Today's gonna be a long run marathon session. We have four fossil, three hundred and thirty. Um, we have full order, four scheduled five. We have an L cap local control, basically budget study session. And on that we have a multi-minute second session.
Second.
And we have four study sessions, local control, accountability plan, and fiscal year 2021-2022. But on this walk will join us both. And I'm sorry, Kelly. Clerk Lewis, he has first. Thank you. And my shelf, hi, time is four oh four. Who does it go to next, Dr. Avila?
Mr. Islam.
We have to do the L cap study.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes, so I will turn it over to Juanita Chan, who's going to assist us with the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board. President Martinez, Vice President Montez, Superintendent Avila, Clerk Lewis, Mrs. O'Kelly. Good evening, good afternoon. I'm here today, this afternoon, with several members of the education services team. Mrs. Mahachko, Mrs. Beth Curtis, and Dr. Chavez. And I'm here just to share with you the L cap for the 2021 through 24 cycle. And so without further ado, I think we'll go ahead and get started, if that's okay. Historically, I talk super fast, especially when I get excited. So I'm gonna do my very best to slow down so that you can, you can follow along here with us. And if you have any questions or comments, there will be a section at the end where you'll be able to answer those. So what you'll notice about today's agenda is that we've broken up the presentation of the L cap into three main sections. And those sections just basically go along with the idea of the acronym L cap. So L cap, local control, we're gonna start off by talking about the legislative history a little bit. Then we're gonna go into accountability and really thinking about how we are making our data actionable. And then we're gonna give you an opportunity to, to interact with the plan itself. We're gonna talk about how we improved the L cap process for our stakeholders, as well as we're gonna highlight a few of the actions and strategies that are in the plan. And like I said earlier, we're also gonna give an opportunity for you to ask questions about those. So let's get started. So the local control, the legislative history. So the local control funding formula is basically a way of removing the old systems restrictions and the red tape that went around schools and budgets. And the focus really from the state was about fulfilling this promise of allowing districts the autonomy really to think about equity as it relates to the people in their community, really focusing in on local control and continuous improvements. To that resolve, that's how the L cap came around, and L cap is an acronym. It stands for the Local Control and Accountability Plan. And we also have annual updates that are utilized. What the purpose of the L cap is, is really to communicate the local education agency, which you'll see as LEA's, actions and our expenditures, and how those two things work in congruence to support student outcomes and overall performance. The journey is really, the journey to a three-year L cap cycle really began in 2013. So the first picture is Dr. Michael Kirst. He used to be the state school board president. And he was working in collaboration with Governor Jerry Brown in 2013 to really think about how to take that finance revision and turn it into a tiered system that really moved toward greater flexibility. The first L cap draft was written in 2013, and it also encompassed three years. But what you'll notice is that as it moved forward, that three-year cycle kind of overlapped. And so what we had was we had a moving target where while we had some additional flexibility, it wasn't really clear where one three-year cycle ended and the other began because the data was always changing and shifting. And there weren't, there weren't those clear divisions. In 2017, 2018, there was also a question about whether this new funding formula would stick around because there was a government, a governor election. So in 2018, there was a new group of individuals that came in, Linda Darling-Hammond, who you see in the bottom right hand of your screen, Governor Newsom, and Superintendent Thurman. And we were excited because it allowed for us to continue this plan. So the last round of L cap was the 2017 through 2020 round of L cap. And what you'll notice is that each year overlaps, and that was the last cycle of overlapping years. If we're moving forward into where we are right now, so the 2020-2021 year, which was, you know, COVID was happening, there was an executive order by Governor Newsom that led to SB 98, which shifted us for just that one year from the L cap the way that we knew it to another acronym that was also L cap. But it stood for the Learning Continuity Plan, and that was what we did this last school year. Where we are right now is in the drafting of the brand-new plan. So it's not an overlapping cycle of data and feedback and all of those pieces, but instead it's a brand-new three-year plan. And this three-year plan is from 2021 to 2024. And so you'll see us reference it that way throughout the presentation. We need to make sure that our priorities are in congruence with the state of California's. And California has given us eight priorities. And those eight priorities are pupil achievement, pupil engagement, other pupil outcomes, school climate, parental involvement, basic services, implementation of state standards, and course access. If you're looking at this slide, this slide also gives you some additional features that are kind of nested inside those titles, which tell you a little bit more specifically what the state was looking for. In order to think about whether we were doing a sufficient job on those or how we can measure growth and progress, the state also implemented the California State Dashboard. The California State Dashboard gives us at a glance how, what our data looks like for two years, really. It's a status year and then the change year. And those status and change measures are outlined on the California Dashboard by each measure being given a certain color. And that color code then gets placed on a, gets placed on a graphic that kind of looks like the kind of graphic for your, your car, like when the gas tank is full or how fast you're going. And so you see that graphic at the top. On the dashboard, you'll see six indicators. There's an academic indicator, an English learner progress indicator, the college and career indicator. There's also measures of chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, and suspension rate. Now, as we're moving into this L cap cycle, it's important for us to take a look at all of those data measures. But it's also important that we understand as a community that some of these measures were put on hold based on the pause that was placed on testing because of COVID. So there was an impact there. So the three that were on hold, you'll see on hold, and as we go through, you'll notice that instead of maybe the 1920 set of data that you're looking at, what you see is, you see 1819 where, where those are referenced. So that leads us to accountability and really thinking about making our data actionable. I also want to take a brief moment here and say that you are going to be exposed to a lot more of this data. On June the 23rd, you'll see all of the local indicators. And so this was just a little highlight piece for us to pull out to kind of highlight how we use some of the data points to directly, to directly link it to the L cap action items, as you'll see them. So the first data point was graduation rate. This came from 1920. And what you see is that, you see the graduation rate in bright, bold letters there. But what that means is that there was an increase of 2% from the previous year, from the 1819 academic year. And as we looked at that, we wanted to think about how those pieces, you know, what we could glow in that moment, especially as we talk to our different stakeholding groups, but also where we had an opportunity to grow so that we can, so that we can include actions that were going to target certain, certain groups or just in general make our programming, what we are able to offer to communities and our families better. So our glow here is that our foster youth rate has increased overall. And our grow here is that we noticed when we're comparing between schools that there's a statistical difference in the rate of students, that graduation rate between students that receive special education services at our high school. Now, this is statistically different, and it was something that we felt like it was important to bring up with our stakeholding groups. But it's also important for us to recognize that students that are receiving special education students, special education services, that in those co-horted groups, it's really an, an extra little star to say that every single student in those cohorts counts. Because those co-horted groups sometimes are so small, it can lead to really large fluctuations in the percentages by just a difference of maybe one or two students. And so student success in that group is super important. Attendance rate, here's our attendance rate. We have maintained over a 95% or higher attendance rate for the over five consecutive years. We have historically very good attendance in Rialto, so we wanted to highlight that. The Williams compliance, we have met Williams compliance standards for over five consecutive years as well. The suspension rate, as reported on Data Quest, was at 3.5% in the 1920 school year. And this was a decrease of, you know, 1.1% from the 1819 California dashboard reporting. The academic indicators were on hold for the 2019-2020 school year, but that didn't mean that we didn't look at any academic data. We did look at academic data, the, the data points that we had. So we looked at the CASP English language arts and mathematics scores for the 2018-2019 academic year. We also looked at English learner progress as we were sharing our data points with our stakeholding groups again during this L cap process. And we looked at student progress toward learning English with the 1819 data. The college and career indicator, which is the percentage of students in the four-year graduation cohort that are considered prepared, and there is a definition by the state of what that means, prepared for post-secondary education. We also looked at the 2018-19 data for that indicator. If we're looking at access to a broad course of study, and A to G rates in particular, we had some glows here as well. So our glow was our overall increase for our four-year rate. And also, there was a substantial increase in English language learner rates for A to G completion as well. Our, our areas of growth that were identified by a variety of different groups was that we noticed a statistical, a different, statistical difference in the rate for African-American students between the high schools. And this was important for us to consider because we were able to talk to different stakeholders about strategies that certain schools were using that proved effective, that we could scale, basically. The same thing is true about the statistical difference in the rate for English language learners between other student groups. So in between the schools, we saw that some were being more successful in this area than others. And so we were able to take some of those action items as well. And we can jump right into the plan, if you'd like. So when we think about the plan, the first thing that we want to highlight is how we improve the process. There was, so there was a historic way that we were gathering information in order to include in the L cap plan. And, and all of those ways, the biggest goal of all of that is to really improve stakeholder voice. We want our stakeholders, all of our stakeholders, to feel like they're listened to, to feel like they have something to, to, to contribute, because they do have something to contribute, to our larger experience. And so what you'll notice in the list of different ways that we collected information from stakeholders that some are historic and traditional, and some of them are, were brand-new this, this cycle. So the historic, traditional way that we collected data, so those student surveys, the teacher surveys, the family engagement surveys, we've done that for years. Day PAC, which is the District African-American Parents Advisory Council, DAC, the District Advisory Council, D-LAC, which is the District English Learner Advisory Council, they've also provided feedback for years through their meetings. In addition, we added equity action teams. So the equity action teams have been in existence for a little while, but this is the first time that they've been able to provide strategic actions for us to include in the L cap plan. And we're gonna highlight some of those in just a few moments. We also recognize that if we're talking about gathering stakeholder feedback, one of the ways that we've got a lot of, we had a lot of people give us a lot of positive feedback was the same way, basically, that we did it for the strategic planning. A lot of our stakeholders felt like strategic planning was very transparent, it was very inclusive. And so we mimicked some of those styles because it seems to work in our community. So when you see the planning team, the planning team was a collection of stakeholders that basically convened multiple times to give insight as to what action items from the 2017-2020 cycle of L cap, what they felt like we should revise and maybe remove. And then we had action teams convene, which were a different group of stakeholders, but representing all of our stakeholding groups again. And those action teams, they provided suggestions for specific actions that they felt like, based on our data that we had collected from some of the other groups, that these are strategies that we should begin, we should commence. The last one, which is the community meetings, we've always run community meetings in both English and Spanish. This year, we did have to transition those to virtual meetings, just like everything else. But we also added a target community meeting specifically for foster youth. At all of the meetings, the Day PAC, all of the parent advisory councils, all of the equity action, all the planning teams, action teams, the community meetings, we also included a survey at the end so that we could continue to grow our effort, to have more and more people included in this process, so we could gather as much information from the community as possible. And then the struggle really became, once we convened all these people, we tried all this new stuff, we had thousands of data points to go off of on top of our regular data. And so we had to meet to talk about how these voices could work in harmony for the L cap. And, and each one of those groups, we had like explicit conversations about, about harmonizing, really. So they understood that just because you provide a suggestion, you might not see every single suggestion in the L cap plan. But that doesn't mean that we're not hearing you. It means that, you know, we're, we're moving and progressing, we're evolving over time. Our biggest goal in all of that was really to rebrand and think about creating a culture of welcome around the L cap as a process, around just parental and family engagement as a process. And so we wanted you to hear directly from the parents what they, how they felt about that process. So what we have here is we have a really brief video. This parent reflection video is about four minutes and 47 seconds, just so that you can hear like direct parent voice. We're gonna keep our fingers crossed that everything is working appropriately.
Again, my name is Leslie Evans. I am currently the secretary for Day PAC. So all of these things happened in this past year. And having parents to be involved and able, first trained and being in spaces where we were, we were once not in those spaces. And if we were invited, we didn't know we were invited, you know? A lot of parents are not aware of the different types of leadership groups that they can participate in, parent-led. This year, L cap, the whole way that they've, that they've really opened up that table so that we can have a, a say. We still have a long way to go, but it is way better than it was.
Yo soy Erika Cruz. So iniciamos con el doctor Ávila haciendo un grupo de plan de equidad, aprendices de inglés, afroamericanos y educación especial. El inicio fue nuestra cultura como mexicano. Nuestros hijos continúen con nuestro idioma, nuestra cultura, y no se avergüencen, es lo principal. Pienso que nuestro distrito todavía nos falta un poco más personal bilingüe. Dirigadores, personal, maestros, desgraciadamente solo es un tema a tocar de discriminación porque hay muchos más. También quería compartir que a partir del plan de equidad salieron otros grupos que fue el de subcomité de TILAC, en el que estuvimos bastantes reuniones y horas con madres, con mis madres, de cuál estoy muy orgulloso que salieron bastantes buenas sugerencias. Gracias.
Uno de los puntos que tratamos fue las barreras y las necesidades que tenemos en el distrito para el programa. Barreras y hay muchas necesidades, pero entre las que yo creí que eran las que más importaban, el tema que todas las mamás siempre discutíamos y recalcábamos era el, el buen trato que se le debe de dar del distrito y las escuelas hacia los padres voluntarios. Que nos den más recursos para que se pudiera dar más capacitación a los padres. Se hablaba de poner un centro de padres tanto en el distrito como en cada escuela para que los mismos padres orienten y ayuden tanto a los padres que acaban de llegar de otros países como a los padres que ya están en este país. Que se hicieran las ceremonias para reconocer a los niños cuando llegaban a su meta de, de la reclasificación y unos reconocimientos pero no de un papel sino el buen trato y, y hacerlos sentir especiales a los papás para que tengamos más papis ayudando. Un punto importante era que hablamos mucho que muchos papás ya no tenemos niños aprendices de inglés pero tenemos muchas ganas y mucha buena actitud de participar.
Again, I am Gina Hayman, and I'm also the vice president for Day PAC, but here representing DAC and the L cap planning and the L cap action team, where I have definitely seen growth. I have definitely seen mighty changes being made for the good. Before, it was just coming to the meetings, sitting at meetings, and just commenting on what was already in place, what was already planned. Now, it's actually being invited to the behind-the-scenes, which now the parent voice is being heard. We have input, we have advice, we made recommendations, we made changes, comments, and even our thoughts were taken into consideration. I saw budgets being adjusted, light items being revised. I was, I was asked, what do you think? And it's like, well, what does that mean? So I learned. It was very rewarding just to be in that space, to have that conversation, to be able to talk freely and say what I actually thought and not be judged about that. And again, the most valuable thing was, was learning, learning as a parent, not knowing beforehand, five years ago, hearing those terms, and now hearing those terms and saying, oh, yeah, I can relate to that. And then being able to spread that and share that with other parents.
All right, let's see if we can make it back to our presentation here. I'm just gonna close that. Hopefully, that was helpful. We felt like it was important to bring today. Some of the features that we heard from these stakeholding, from our variety of different stakeholders additionally, is that they felt like the new L cap, there's a new feature in L cap in the template that allows to offer an infographic, which is what you see on the left. They felt like that infographic was hugely helpful, it was easier to read, and it was easier to navigate. You heard a lot of comments about the pro- You heard a lot of comments about the process just in general being more informative, and we were really proud of that for our community. And then the third thing that we heard was that they could tell that there was a clear focus on literacy and numeracy, and they felt like that was really important for our students as well. We also, in the creation of the new template, California created a new template, that the state of California gave us some additional information about how to listen more carefully and how to create an LCAP plan that was more aligned with, again, with what the overall goals are, which are really focusing in on those contributing actions. So when we look at the LCAP, you can look at all of the actions in the LCAP, and those actions can, you know, they are for every student in our community. But there should also be a substantial number of actions that contribute. And when they say contribute, what that means is that they are going to have a direct impact on English learners, on the socio-economically disadvantaged students that we serve, and also on foster youth. And so there are, we really want to make sure that there's a clear connection with those contributing actions. Additionally, we can have focused actions, and those focused actions can also focus on particular groups, and they should be contributing also to, again, those English learners, the foster youth, and this, and those students that are socio-economically This is a shift in the process that really focuses all of our efforts on those supplemental concentration groups. So the direction that California is going is clear, starting from left to right on this graphic at the top, they want us to use our data. They want us to look at those local indicators, they want us to analyze all that data, and to collect a variety of stakeholder input so that we can hear from the community what the specific needs of the low-income students, the students that are English learners and foster youth, what are the specific needs? And we're collecting all those metrics so that we can then identify and track progress and develop new actions that seek to address those specifically identified needs. From there, the annual updates will ask us to implement the said plan, and then monitor the plan, and make course corrections as we need to make those course corrections. And then, we're going to analyze our outcomes, and we're going to look at the data to determine whether progress was made toward addressing those identified student needs. And so just like we were talking about that three-year cycle, it's really clear in this new shift that we're looking at them in terms of three years. When we are talking about summarizing the goals for all of our stakeholder groups, we summarized each goal basically like this. So Goal One, which is achievement, we thought about those as services at the student desk. Goal Two, which is conditions for learning, we really thought about those as services that also occur at the school. And then Goal Three, which was engagement, those are services that are really in the community. Because our equity groups have been in existence for a few years, but this is the first year that we've asked them specifically to give us some action suggestions, we wanted to just highlight for you the specific action suggestions and how those suggestions were incorporated as well into the LCAP. And so the bullets underneath are the titles of the actions that kind of go along with some of the requests that were made by these equity teams. If we wanted to look more specifically at Rialto's goals, Rialto's goal under achievement was that all Rialto USD students will succeed at every grade level and graduate high school demonstrating readiness for higher education, career, and life in the 21st century. There are, if we're going to highlight again, just some of the key features, there were some key sustained actions that went along with that, and you'll see those listed on the left. There are also some new actions, so we found a way to make some space for some new actions so we could try some things that are innovative. There's a clear connection here between literacy and numeracy, our efforts, that's our clear focus. But also, the advancement of diversified curriculum, NAVions, which you'll see coming up a little bit later, which is a data portal in order to help our students to create clear plans of action as they're articulating up and going into post-secondary. And then, of course, the Early Learning and Care Program. Goal Two, which was conditions for learning, our goal statement is Rialto USD will ensure all students are provided with access and opportunities to support learning with highly qualified teachers and professional learning communities that promote a culture of continuous improvement for student achievement. And so in order to do that, there were some sustained actions, again, like teacher induction, like the elementary strategist, like the multilingual programs professional development. But we also were able to find space for some new actions. Some key ones are the culturally responsive teaching and learning, the literacy training, the numeracy training, since literacy and numeracy are going to be our focus, and also the STEM training and special education and inclusion. Rialto's Goal Three statement under engagement is Rialto USD will create a positive, safe, and engaging learning environment that is student and parent-centered. And so some of our sustained actions, which you'll also see have been revised a little bit, and to kind of make those a little bit more robust, are our continued support for McKinney-Vento and foster youth through liaisons, through the employment of liaisons. We have our wellness centers, our social-emotional learning, mental health services, which focus on academic, you know, academically-focused mental health services, family engagement, equity and cultural community. One is cut off on our presentation here, but you have it in your slide deck there. And the new actions have to do with engagement of students with extracurricular activities during the school day, and also extracurricular activities outside of the school day. And of course, some additional student and community engagement opportunities. So we have highlighted some of the features that we felt like were important for you to, you know, to be aware of, but of course, you have a copy of the entire LCAP plan in your LCAP binder. And additionally, if you wanted to engage with the LCAP in the way that, you know, parents are saying, oh, it's much easier to read like this, on the district website, there is, you see the URL at the bottom of the screen there, and that will take you directly to the infographic for the LCAP, which is the easiest way of really engaging with the LCAP. Our next steps is, like I mentioned before, on June 23rd, the LCAP will come back to you, and we're hoping that you will, you know, adopt that. There will also be a presentation on the local indicators, so those data points that you saw earlier, you'll see those along with additional data points, so that you can ask all of your questions about the data and kind of see how those things are related to the new actions. We will submit the entire LCAP plan to the county by June 30th, and then pending approval, they have a certain amount of time to get that back to us. If you would like, so you received a copy printed of the LCAP draft this evening, but if you would like to receive another copy, it is available at the Chavez Fuertes Center, it's available here, printed out, and you can also get another copy at Categorical Programs. That being said, it's time for questions, if you have any questions. Hopefully, that clarified some things.
Board, any questions?
There's lots to take in all at once.
Um, yes. So, after reviewing the 2017-20 plan summary in conjunction with our current, is lacking innovation to really identify at which level, you know, we need to break it down so we can budget accordingly. Is it the English learners in grades K through six? How are they progressing? What is the, where they get reclassified?
Clerkless?
Yes.
Clerkless?
Yes.
Into the microphone, please.
Oh.
That's yours.
No more mute?
No.
Now I can reach it, oppressive?
Just pull it to you.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Can I have to have my boardroom orientation, so I just press here?
Oh, you don't need to press it.
Oh, it's just on, okay.
I think it's pushed to mute, isn't it?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you, this is my colleagues in person, and the cabinet in person, it's a pleasure. So, that's what I was sort of missing, comparing the two. You stated that we're moving forward, so the progression of really having that year off to really identify, you know, where are we doing the best at reclassification, where are we lacking? Also, with the groups, I know you have the three targeted, but one person can be in all targets. So, how are we sorting that out?
Well, if you don't mind.
This is Mahachko, this is Miss Mahachko, and she'd like to respond, so. Yeah, thank you.
So I'm Carol Mahachko, I'm Academic Agent for Special Programs, and I'm frequently behind the scenes, working with Diane Romo with the LCAP. And so I'm usually over on the program end of things and the narrative pieces, and Miss Romo really oversees the fiscal. So that's kind of after all's said and done, we kind of come put it together. So just a couple of things. There is a template change from 1720 to the template we have now. And the biggest change, and you may not realize it, but it is in your binder, I believe it's tab three, is the annual update. Normally, that's all together in the LCAP, and next year, it will be back together. But that's where you see what was expended, and then there's also narrative reflections. And the other thing that they did to change with the template, which you'll notice when you look in the plan itself, they have all the data points clustered under a given goal that we use for the specific actions, so they've moved that all together. And you will see in the new template, there is a column with contributing. So when those actions are in specific, and you are right, as a district, we're 88% plus of free and reduced lunch, which is our lower socioeconomic, we're, you know, a high percentage of English learners, and foster youth is about 1%. But when we talk about supplemental concentration, we're actually specifically saying unduplicated students. So we get the additional money, that's that last section of your LCAP, for those students that only fall in one category. But we look at that overall. So when we marked an action contributing, that meant that it could have met all three, because some cases, we actually say, and unfortunate, well, fortunately and unfortunately, one huge change with the template was to make the budget part more transparent. So that may have all had been narrative before, but if you go to the budget sections towards the end of the LCAP plan, you'll notice there's a table, and by each action, it says what the targeted groups are, if it's all students, who that is, and if it's in the supplemental concentration groups, it has listed, is it all free and reduced lunch, English learners, and foster youth, or just a particular group? So I hear, you know, it was great feedback, Ms. Lewis, but some of it might have been that the template changed. And I will say, the state's very thoughtful when they change the template, because I've attended some sessions on giving feedback, they don't look at adding more. What they have people do as stakeholders to give feedback is actually read the law. What does ed code say? What does that mean? So anytime they've changed the template, it's in reflection, you know, are we really truly meeting what the letter of the law is as this was designed back in 2013? So I don't know if that's helpful to answer your questions, but as you flip through again, you might see some of those pieces that you may not have seen with how it was all put together for the 2017-2020.
Okay. And just my last question, so when we do the general summary of like 97% graduates and things like that, I think it'll be helpful, you know, all the foster care, what's their percentage of graduation? When you summarize, for, you know, the parents, what are targeted, where we're spending these designated?
Right.
What are their graduation, what are their reclassification?
Right, and that's, yeah, that's great information. When we share, when we say California dashboard, we are sometimes limited because the data will only go down to a certain number, and our foster youth is a smaller number, so sometime it's not reported separately. But that is great data that we can tease out by ourselves to put that data in there to support. So when we come and this process is ongoing, there will be an annual update, so again, there'll be a board study session, you know, June 2022, and we're going to be back to say, here's how we've done. And definitely, have we moved any of those data points that were included? Because we have to report it, they put it all together so it shows a flow. Here's the baseline, year one, year two, and then here's what our ultimate goal was.
Thank you. If I could just add one more piece, and that is some of the, I'm like, the tweeting.
The one additional piece that I just wanted to add, with my mask on or not, I'm sure you could still hear me, is that on the 23rd, when you see the local indicator presentation, some of those points that you brought up will be brought out in that presentation. So there's lots more data, and there is also some disaggregation of the data, which is what I'm hearing you, like, request, is what does it look like for this group and that group, et cetera? Mrs. Villalobos will be here, and she will be able to share more information that looks like what you're asking for.
Board, anybody else have questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I just, I think it's great, this is probably one of the best LCAP presentations that I've seen in a while, but I just would like to challenge our district to see if we can change a little bit the wording when we refer to students as low-income, lower socioeconomic households. It just, to me, it just sounds a little condescending. Maybe we can find better terms, you know, for those of us who live in this community.
I live here too.
We take a lot of pride, we take a lot of pride in our neighborhoods and in our city, you know, and to constantly hear that, you know, it's just kind of, it's just awkward, and I don't want to wait for someone in the community to be like, what do you guys, who do you guys think you guys are, or whatever, you know?
Right.
But I would just, I would just ask that. Other than that, you know, the presentation was really well, so thank you.
Thank you. I think that those groups were identified by the state.
No, I get it. No, and I get that that's what we, that's what we are. I'm just saying, I can challenge our district for us to take the initiative to see if we can find a better terminology, words can be impactful.
We use economic actress.
Sounds better to me.
Already.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's other ways.
Okay, Board, if I can remind you to bring your microphone up to you, I know it's new again.
I got two microphones right here.
Yeah, okay. Dr. Chavez had something else to chime in, if I remember. You're going to run out.
Can President, President Martinez?
Yes, sir.
While she transitions, if I can also just add a little bit from what Juanita has indicated. So I have been working with Paulina Villalobos, probably since January, early January, on a district-wide comprehensive report that really captures all of the data pieces, all the way down to grade-level classrooms, and every student population group that we have in the district, across a plethora of sections or indicators, to really give us, in the moment, live data that we can query and find out how students in first grade, African-American students, or English language learners, in any particular classroom, how they are doing so that we can literally be able to see or access information, performance and information on every student in the district. And so she'll be making part of that, including part of that information then, but I know she's been working on putting together a, the software, working with the software that will allow us to just generate reports on the spot across the district from pre-K all the way through our 12th grade.
Wow.
And then consistent with what Mr. Montes just suggested, we'll absolutely take a look at that internally, just as I have challenged Angela Bradley, and I don't know where she is in the process, to get the state to change even the SARB name, because that's the kids, it could be a first grader, second grader, kids' first introduction to a hearing board, that to me rings similar to prison hearing boards or probation boards. And so she's working with the staff from the county office, and also with the state, to see how we can change that acronym to something a lot more positive for kids who are challenging.
Much better.
Struggling to attend school.
Excellent. Dr. Chavez, are you ready?
Yes, so, good afternoon, everyone. So in that vein, I just wanted to assure the board that we are on the same page. I love your questions. We are working on a one-page summary that really helps us, it's just. It's just a graphic, helps us align the, the, the local indicator data, our actions and our funding, and how that's all put together. The way that we move schools, the way that we drive our work, it should be through, you know, those gaps, right? We, we shouldn't be swimming in this ambiguity, right? And I think the data and that correlation is really going to help us create that strong focus and that laser-like focus. So we will have that ready for the board as well on the twenty-third. Thank you.
Thank you, that's awesome. I wanted to congratulate Dr. Avila and everybody who's involved. You, you know your names, some of you are very quiet in the background. But coming from the beginnings that we had and like twenty to thirty pages down to this, this is wonderful. It's, it's meaningful, even more important, it's meaningful to the public, to the parent. And I, I just applaud you because this is the correct direction, I believe, for our community. We, we can't say it for everybody. But once again, you are leading the way. Thank you. Okay, anything else, board? All righty. We are on to adjournment of LCAP, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget study session. Can I have a motion any second, please?
So move?
Second.
Wow, that was quick. All right. Ms. Walker, welcome.
Welcome, glad to be here.
Okay. And your vote on adjournment of study, the board's study session?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. O'Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you. Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Montez.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Time is four forty-eight. Okay, it looks like we are going to be in, hmm. We're off until six o'clock, folks.
Don't we have the budget?
We still have the budget.
Okay, I didn't see anything here, but. Okay. In that case.
So if we can unclose?
Yes, we need to reopen, thanks to me. Okay, motion to open the budget portion of this session.
So move?
Second.
Thank you.
Darn, I thought we were done, darn.
I know.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
President Mr. Martinez, Vice President Mr. Montez, Board Clerk Mrs. Lewis, and board members. It is very exciting today to see you all present in the room.
Likewise.
And I feel very excited to be here. Tonight, we're here, as you heard, the LCAP plan, we are presented tonight. And we're bringing our budget plan to you tonight for, just so for you review and considerations. The budget and LCAP both going to be adopted at the next board meeting, not tonight. So I just want to remind you, tonight is just a study session. There's no action will be taken. It will be on the subsequent board meeting, as required by law.
And Mohammed, if you can pause for a quick second. So just a brief announcement to the, to the board and those of us here. If we're not sharing the microphone, it is okay for us to remove our masks, if you're comfortable.
So I should put it, I'm okay?
We have to keep cleaning that one because that's a shared mic. So you're fine.
You're good. Thank you. So before I begin, the presentation that tonight we've prepared for you, board, and you have a copy of the presentation and you have the binder. So if you don't have a copy of the presentation, I have a copy here available for you. Could you please? Yes. You should, you should have one, I know Martha, you have a copy. Anybody need a copy of the presentation?
Is it in the binder?
No.
No, they weren't.
Separate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right. No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it should be on your.
Yeah, we did.
It will only have the LCAP part unless I missed it. Oh, was it?
I have it.
Oh, is it the same?
I know Martha has a copy, so anyway. Everybody has a copy of the presentation? Can I begin? Thank you. Before I draw your attention to the information that we prepared for you tonight, I want to give a quick reminder to all of us. As you recall, the Governor Newsom releases so-called May revised, we call May revision budget on May fourteen for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. And he submits a plan to the legislators for their consideration approval. The budget is not up to the governor until it goes through the legislative process and approved by the legislators. And the legislators has a deadline until June fifteen to approve the governor's plan, approve or modify or, and pass the next year proposed budget. So we're not there yet, I want to remind, one reminder. We're today, we're June nine. Everything I'm presenting tonight is based on governor's plan, not the final approved budget, which will be signed by the governor June thirtieth. So these are, these are constitutional deadlines. These are not a change every year. So governor has until June thirtieth. Once the legislators approve the budget, it goes to the governor. And once governor worked to the legislators final, then he has until midnight, June thirtieth, to sign the budget. Until the budget is signed, nothing is final. Many of you remember, that was a year back, state has to call IOU. I hope some of you remember, we get IOU because state did not, that budget was not approved or adopted by June thirtieth. So that's, I want to remind that. And is that going to happen? I'm not saying that, but I'm just want to, that's a process. The other thing I want to remind you, the Proposition Twenty-five changed the legislative process of approval of the budget. It used to be two-thirds, now it's a simple majority. Just to approve the budget, this is legislators. So that changed all in, in place.
That's good.
So just, I'm just being some highlight for the, some of the things you expected to know or see was coming through between now and June thirtieth. Again, the governor revised budget proposal is simply based on his projected revenue for current fiscal year and, and, and deficit in current fiscal year and the next fiscal year, meaning two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. Tonight, we are presenting the governor's plan again based on his proposals. And, and we're going to share some of the numbers and highlight and what they mean to real twenty-four school districts. Before I continue, I want to introduce my two partner who's going to join with me tonight. Is Diane Romo, right here. Thank you, Diane, being here. As you can see, she's present today. And she's our lead business service agent. And with me also, Nicole, where's Nicole? Is here, and we're going to share the presentations. I will do some slide, and then we'll just share some slide. With that, I'd like to begin with a very first slide we have. I think I have the, somebody going, oh, I can. It's not working? Yeah? Oh, thank you. Sorry, this is a new device. As you can see, again, this is the governor's budget, May revision highlight. The State General Fund projected a big surplus this year. This is historically, state never had a surplus. As you know, I can speak my thirty-three years of my professional life in this business. This is a big surplus, and we all know why. Because of COVID nineteen really gave us a lot of one-time money coming from the federal to the state. Because of that, we, we got surplus, a hundred billion dollar. Governor released surplus last year. Many of you remember, governor declared deficit, fifty-four billion dollar deficit. So this is opposite. You can see that this year, we got a big surplus money. And you can see some of the numbers will reflect why there's an increased part of his proposal. The second bullet, you can see the increase primarily, I just said that the state revenue and federal resources, the large number of resources we received one time from the federal government because of COVID nineteen. And seventy-six billion dollar is the big ticket item. We all know where the money comes from, the state revenue, personal income tax, sales and use tax, and corporate tax. Those are the big three source of revenue state collect every year. And that is, represents seventy-six billion dollar part of the governor budget and twenty-five billion dollar coming from federal sources. Continue to the next bullet. Part of the increase, POP ninety-nine minimum grant is projected to be increased from eighty-five point eight billion dollar to ninety-three point seven billion dollar. As you can see, the numbers are, I'm sorry, right here. And again, this is an increase based on the comparing from the governor's January budget proposals to May revisions. That, that number reflects an increase of total seven point nine billion dollar increase. That's a huge increase. Again, part of the governor proposals, he's, he present COLA for four point five percent. And surprisingly, he gave us additional one percent mega. We call mega COLA because of the all, all surprise money we receive from the federal government. And that represents his hundred billion dollar surplus. He's trying to allocate some of the surplus to, back to the educations, other state agencies. So we are going to get part of the surplus, surplus funding coming through additional COLA, one percent, we call mega COLA. That represent real twenty-four school districts, share of the COLA is fourteen point one million dollar. The second bullet, under the COLA, we're getting a special COLA at four point zero five percent. And that represent four hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty dollar for next fiscal year. And third bullet, preschool program going to receive one point seven percent COLA. So you can understand that the difference of percentage of COLA. And not all, everybody is not getting same percentage. LCFF is getting the, the lion's share of the increase on the funding. So preschool funding COLA is going to receive two hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine fifty-seven. The, the, the second to the last bullet, the programs are not getting no COLA. We call categorical program, but my definition, they, they used to be called categorical, but not restricted, general fund restricted programs. Couple of example, I gave you in the slide, one on the slide, title one, title two, after-school program, CTE, career attack education programs. Continue to the next slide. I'm going to turn over to Diane Romo, she's going to cover this slide.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So on this slide, we wanted to show you the changes that are expected for the LCFF. There's two components that affect the amount of funding we receive. One of them is the COLA, as Mohammed mentioned previously, and the other is a change in ADA. For two thousand and nineteen, twenty through two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, we are being funded from the ADA reported in two thousand and nineteen, twenty. So for almost three years, we've been funded at this higher level of ADA, which has been just, you know, awesome for the district because, as you can see, in the upcoming year, we're getting fourteen point one million to help with all of our increased cost. However, in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, when we have to go back to reporting our actual ADA and being funded on actual ADA, we're going to see the note, the difference between where we were funded and how many students we have left in the district and their actual attendance rate. So in this year, we lose over a thousand ADA. And you can see that affecting the amount of funding that we're going to actually lose. Because even though we're getting a COLA of two point four eight, the loss coming from that ADA is much higher. So in this year, we've had to adjust our budget to make sure that we still work within the amount of funding that we're receiving. So in the third year, which is two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, it kind of goes back to a, a normal cycle of being funded on the higher of the current year or the prior year ADA. So in that year, although we continue to project a loss of enrollment, we have an overall increase in our funding because the COLA offsets some of that loss. So when we do prepare the budget, we update our revenues and our expenses, and we make those adjustments within the expenses to make sure that we continue to operate within our means. One of the changes as well for the upcoming year is the deferrals. In the current year, we had over sixty million dollars from February through May and June that weren't paid to the district. So if you remember earlier in the year, you approved the TRAN, which is basically a short-term loan on the promise that the state is going to pay us. Those funds came in, which allowed us to meet our payroll and our other expenses. And now, when the state decides to pay us in July through October, they're going to take a portion of each month to repay that TRAN. For the upcoming year, it is being proposed that we don't have any deferrals. The only month that would be deferred would be June. So they wouldn't pay us anything for June, two thousand and twenty-two, which is about twenty million dollars, but it would be paid in July. Back in March, it was approved, the American Rescue Plan was approved to address, you know, costs related to COVID in education as well as accelerating learning. So our district fortunately was awarded approximately sixty-six million dollars to use through September, two thousand and twenty-four. There is an array of items that this can be used for. But basically, it's anything to support education, mental health, physical health, the quality of ventilation systems in school districts, and any other expense that really helps keep the level of service at a school district. So you, you will be seeing a plan for the use of these funds. As it is a requirement, it just came out, I believe, yesterday or the day before. So we'll be presenting that to you at a future date. In our district, we primarily are going to use these funds to continue the literacy and numeracy plan that was presented earlier by the LCAP team as the costs associated with those additional staff are being covered by one funding source next year. And then we're going to continue to fund it with the S or three money in the subsequent two years. So this budget has many, many, many proposals in it that are unique. And so these are all things that the governor is proposing that get incorporated into the budget. But none of them are really, let me back up. Some of them appear to be supported and some of them don't. So the way we presented them is based on the level of support. One of the ones that has a lot of support is increasing the supplemental concentration percentage from fifty percent to sixty-five percent. What this means to our district is, as a district that has an eighty-eight percent unduplicated count, we would actually receive approximately about ten million dollars more that we would have to use towards providing additional services for these students. So if this does get passed, we would have to make a revision to the LCAP and identify services that those students need, up to that ten million dollars. The other proposal is universal TK, transitional kindergarten by two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. And what it does is, it extends the eligibility period for transitional kindergarten by a month, so that by two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, all four-year-olds actually get to come and participate in TK. There would be additional planning for, or additional funding for planning as to, you know, what kind of curriculum do we offer? What kind of classroom prep do we need? What kind of infrastructure do we need, facilities? And then one of the key things too as well is, they want the child to, adult ratio to be one to. be one to 12, which our kindergarten classes are usually 1 to 25. So this would be, this would be a huge undertaking, but again, the benefit would be there for our students and it seems to have a lot of support. The other one that seems to be very positive as well is the California Community School Partnership Program. This is a program currently that's being offered on a grant basis that its goal is to offer community schools. So in a community school, not only do you educate the child, you look out for both their physical and mental wellness. And so the governor has proposed to set aside $3 billion so that he can offer more competitive grants to districts that are interested.
So the 50% match would mean they would match the district's 50%?
Right. So if the district was to ask for 300,000, then the district would have to have 300,000 in-house to match the grant provided, which our district currently offers many services. So the match would not be difficult for us. The other one that's, or the other two, last two that are significant but are not really being supported by the state legislature is a targeted intervention grant, which sought to increase tutoring and instructional time. But because we have other categorical funding that has been already approved in the last year for similar purposes, it doesn't seem to have a lot of support from the state legislature. And then the other one is the in-person instruction health and safety grant, which is to kind of address health concerns related to COVID prevention as students come back to in-person. Again, we've, we've received a lot of cares money from the federal government. And so there seems to be a redundancy in funding and its purpose. So they, I think they just feel like it'd be overwhelming for school districts to receive more money for the same purpose on top of it. So now we have Mohammed.
So the next slide, pretty much we're giving you a quick overview of the, our multi-year projections, beginning, we're showing your current fiscal year, 2021, and the budget year and subsequent two years. Things I'd like to draw your attention to, you board and everyone present, as you can see, 2021, everything we call projected, our fiscal year has not ended yet. We're still, generally, we close our books in the mid-August or late August. So we're in May, now June, I'm sorry. So you can, everything we're calling, is called projections. And these are all subject to change. I want to be clear to the board and everyone present tonight to hear this. So our projections are, again, we're projecting, it's a very realistic number, it's not unrealistic. So we're not saying what that means when you say projections. So you can see that our, we're projecting our operating deficit. You see the word called structural. You can see the, we are, we look good this fiscal year as we get a lot of one-time money. And I call we're rich. Every school district got a lot of money because of COVID-19. And you can see we have a large ending balance for current fiscal year, 110.2 million dollar combined general fund, restricted, unrestricted total. To your right, and you can see the numbers in red and the circle, you can look at your unrestricted general fund has a planned operating deficit. And is that, that's not a good sign. And I'm being, I'm being clear to you, that's why we're putting on the red and circle to draw your attentions. As you can see, we have 46.4 million dollar combined total in fiscal year, next fiscal year. What that means to you board, because we got a lot of money, the current fiscal year, you heard Diane just highlight that we receive 66 million dollar one-time money from the COVID relief fund, they reflect on the budget year. We cannot spend all this year. The deadline to spend those money is September 2024. It's not meant to be all spent 2021, 21, 22, or 22, 23. And they gave us a three years to spend. All the money just came current fiscal year because of COVID-19. So there's a lot of, you can see the budget is, looks pretty rich, 2021. Going forward, you can see some of the negative number, but we, are we looking good? Yes, we are for next fiscal year due to the fact, we got a lot of one-time money rolled over to the next year and subsequent years. We, we do maintain 3% required reserve. I want to draw your attentions. It's required by state. The requirement may change. We don't know yet in fiscal year 22, 23. As you know, state has been talking about to raise the reserve cap to 10%, but that's not being enforced yet due to the lack of, could not reach the Proposition 98 maintenance factor. So it's still to be seen. I'm not, I don't want to, just alarming you, I'm just saying that may happen, may not happen. We don't know yet. But as of right now, they're shooting for fiscal year 22, 23. So at that time, we may have to raise required 10% combined total general fund, restricted, unrestricted. It's not meant to be unrestricted. So now you can see the, so we are, we're looking good. Now, as you can see, we have a positive ending balance. We are meeting the requirement of the 3% as of now. And we have some numbers we have available, we call unassigned, unappropriated ending balance, meaning they're not obligated. They're available for any other purposes or reason this may come at later date. So continue to the next slide. Am I doing? Yeah, that's 40. Is it? It doesn't work. Yeah, this is 40. Oh, it went too far. Okay, thank you. Sorry. So this slide, we're showing you, as you know, we're required to submit three years' plan. Even the governor giving you one year's plan, we are required by law to submit three years' plan. Something, this, thank you. So we're giving you next subsequent two years beyond the budget year, we have to submit to the state and the county. Again, I'm going to draw your attention to the negative numbers. You can see it, 22, 23 projected number. I can see the deficit, we call operating deficit. And I can see the numbers increase. And you can see the following year numbers is all negative means that we exceed the revenue, expenditure exceed over the revenue. You can see the revenue number and you can see expenditures. You take the revenue minus expenditure, that's your deficit. That's again budgeted plan deficit based on our current operating plan going forward, current fiscal, next fiscal year and subsequent fiscal year. So anything changed, those numbers are subject to change. Continue to the reserve requirement, still continue 3%. We're continuing to maintain 3% until the state reach the point that we require 10%. We're not there yet. So we are looking good, but again, I want to draw your attention, these numbers does not impress me, or should not impress you either. Because they're, they're, when you have a negative number, unless you closely monitor your revenue expenditure throughout the year, you may get a fiscal problem. Because right now, we're good because of, we have a lot of one-time money. And you heard Diane highlight some of the changes, we're going to be, beginning next school year, we're not going to be used prior year attendance or ADA. We have to use our current next school year numbers and you know, and we're going to share some of the slide showing our enrollment, how continue going down. So that, they're all reflections on these numbers, everything we're projecting going forward. So again, that we are going to meet the requirement as required now, 3% next following fiscal year and the subsequent fiscal year. That leaving your unassigned and numbers, small change. Another thing I want to draw your attention, you see assigned number, what that mean? 33.3 million dollar under the unrestricted general fund. These are all restricted program. As you know, COVID-19 funding is not unrestricted. The unrestricted about that came with the restrictions, meaning they're conditional, where the money, how money should be spent, for what cause, and the deadline. And again, you heard deadline is September 2024. So we're going to continue to spend those money for the purpose of funding was given. And they came under the categorical unrestricted and some of them is restricted. And that's why you never seen that size of balance under the so-called assigned restricted, unrestricted balance at the end of the fiscal year. And continue to the following year, and that's kind of where the deadline, where the money need to be spent. So, and we are not going beyond 23, 24 because we're only required to submit three years' plan. So going forward, and I want to draw your attentions to the board and everybody listening tonight, it is, we have to pay attentions to these numbers, these numbers, how we closely monitor and our challenge, I'm going to be, my 33 years of professional life in this business, I'm going to share this, the challenge I call rainy days ahead of us, we're not there yet. And I'm going to be, speak to you the way that we say it. So your challenge will be not this year, your challenge will be going forward after next year. Meaning when you are, if someone, when you receive next year, 22, 23 plan for next three years budget, you have a fiscal challenge. And I want to remind you board, and you have to be careful and administration, I want to speak to superintendent, everyone we're here, it's not I'm giving you, just to, I'm just alarming you to keep monitor carefully how you spend, how we spend our money because we got one-time money, that, how we need to, how we plan spending those money, we have to be careful whether we're spending those money for one-time purposes or how we are building into the budget for ongoing. Your challenge will be ongoing commitments. And, and, and other things I want to draw your attentions, you know, 80% is a cost of the budget is a people cost, or salaries and benefit. And you'll see in the number later on in the slide. So only 20% is non-salaries, non-people cost. So if we're not careful, what is our current and ongoing obligation with, with salaries and benefit, that can drive you fiscal insolvency. You don't need every category, that one category alone, and I have seen my 33 years of life, how that drive to district in trouble, financial trouble. Nancy?
I was just wondering, this is on the topic but off the topic. You know, we spent quite a bit of time listening to the plans to build that new community where the country club is in North Rialto?
Yes.
Where are we at with that? Because that would bring more ADA to us when those houses are built.
Well, thank you for asking, Ms. Kelly. That's been further delay, defer due to COVID-19, everything COVID-19 causing.
It's just stopped, huh?
Yes. And, and I honestly don't know the current status and I can get, find out the status and give you a report to the board because that kind of anything, everything else can put on hold due to the COVID-19. But I think they're probably getting ready to start, start over from the, from where they stopped. So I can, I can get you a report to you board and Dr. Avila on that matter since you asked me. Yes, that, that project, the housing project you're referring to, yes, we, that would bring some enrollment back.
Right.
And that was, we're counting on it, but unfortunately, COVID-19 arrived and that delay everything and deferring everything going forward. And I don't know their timeline now, but everything was ready to go, but I can bring an update to the board. Next slide. I don't know, this is, I need a better hand. Thank you. This is a slide giving you the highlight of the, where is this revenue source, where they're coming from? And, and this is again, combined general fund, restricted, unrestricted general fund. Your revenue sources, you see 79% is called LCFF funding, local control funding formula, which is our main funding source. That represent you 79%. Other, other 21% represent your, your 10% is the federal money. I know I have those percentages. And your 7% is your state and 4% is the local. When you say what is the 10%, what makes 10% federal money? There are Title I, Title II, Title III money. You have NCLB, every student succeed act, no Charlie tap behind, special ed entitlement, some of the COVID relief fund coming from the federal. And the state revenue, mostly the lottery money. We get, you know, 4.8 million dollar lottery money comes to the school districts. And after school program, we're getting 3.1 million dollar and CTE money and other, other, other funding sources. And local revenue, you say, what does local revenue means? Mostly is interest, money we earn having in the, having in the bank. We get roughly about $1 million interest, you know, we earn every year through our fund being, being in the county pool because money has been invested, we, so we do earn interest. And we get a special ed money coming to.
Mohammed, do you need to click so that the titles appear?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Somehow we had the title, but so this is, this is, I'm referring to 4%, the local, that represent 4%. The 7% was, I know, I'm sorry, thank you, Dr. Avila. 7% was the state, 10% was the federal. The 4% is, I'm stocking right now, local. And part of the, again, the money we represent 15.4 million dollar is, is a local money built in the budget year. So again, this, this number represent, I think in your slide, in your, in the folder or the package, you have the numbers, dollar figure, correct?
Right. It's all there.
Thank you. I know it was there, but anyway, so I'm referring to the number, 4% is represent little over 15.4 million dollar. Do you see that number? And that represent, again, interest income, we see them from the fund we have, a total general fund and a special ed. We get money coming through SALPA, transferred to the districts, 11.6 million dollar we're getting from, through the SALPA for our special program. And we got redevelopment agency, RGA money, about 2.3 million dollar. If you add those numbers, that represent about 15.4 million dollar total. The next slide, I think Nicole, I'm going to give you the timeline.
While he's going now, let him, let him finish.
Go ahead.
My name is Nicole Albizso. I'm the interim lead fiscal services agent. It looks like we're having some technical difficulties with our graphs, but you guys have the printed copies. So if you guys have any questions, just let me know. So this is the, the breakdown of district expenditures by category. And although our labels are gone, on your paper, you'll notice that a majority of our budget is comprised of salary and benefits. We've also increased our supply expenditures due to the precautionary measures that we had to take due to COVID-19. And we've also increased our services and operating expenditures by bringing in additional services to accelerate learning. The last category that we had a big increase in was our district capital outlay budget. And this is due to maintenance and operations, having the opportunity to work on deferred maintenance projects. This next slide displays the breakdown of salaries and benefits. Again, it's kind of skewed from the conversion, it looks like. But one thing to note is the increase in the. But one thing to note is the increase in the certificated staff, which is the thirteen, the one thousand three hundred and forty-six number. And this is due to the implementation of the district's early literacy program. And then also the other thing to notice on this slide is in the bottom right corner, you'll notice a breakdown of the ratio of salaries and benefits to the overall budget. And in the very bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that seventy-six percent of our overall fund budget is comprised of salary and benefits. And this is the final image we have for you. This is our district enrollment trend. As you, as you can see, our enrollment continues to trend downwards despite the registration center and media services, services to, sorry, efforts to promote open enrollment for the upcoming year. We do anticipate that this trend will continue due to families moving out of the area due to the pandemic, but still leaving their kids enrolled in the Rialto district via distance learning to finish out the school year. We are also hoping that in the coming year, families that have moved to the area for that same reason will enroll their students into our district and hopefully, hopefully offset this decline.
I have a question.
Yes.
What numbers are you using for your projected? For the enrollment?
For the enrollment?
Is it the calling in or the people register? How you, what's your data set for the projected?
We look at. We look at the parents who have already enrolled. We look at the trends from the prior year. We take into account new communities that are being built. And that, those are our data sets.
Because I was just curious with the whole COVID year. And then people are just now getting the enrollment.
I'm sorry. So now people are finally utilizing the enrollment and coming to the school. I was just curious.
Well, we look, yes.
The housing has increased, not the big development, but they've been like numerous throughout Rialto.
Yes.
And they're, they're coming in new from other areas. So I think, you know, hopefully.
Yeah. So we're hoping that with all that increased movement into our boundaries, that it'll offset the, the normal decline that we see every year, not these last few years, because as Diane mentioned, we, we had the, the hold harmless, so we didn't have to report our ADA, but in the past years, we've always declined, and so we're taking that into account as well.
In addition, with Mohammed projection, was the revenue anticipated based on the loss of ADA for the next two or three years?
Yes, we do take that into account.
Okay.
And that concludes our presentation. So Mohammed is going to come and give a closing statement and answer any questions you may have.
Before I give you my closing statement, board, I bring one slide and Nicole just spoke and talked to you. The slide, now I'm going to say, draw your attentions, you see the eighty-seven percent people costs? And the reason your numbers is low combined total? Because you got a lot of one-time money built into your total general fund operating budget. When your total budget is up, your salary is, is here, the percentage drop. So I want to explain to you why the, you can see that eighty-seven percent, when you combine total, your district, total general fund, people cost is seventy-six percent. It looks, generally, school districts, you know, you try to look at eighty percent level. That's kind of, not, not region guideline is kind of unspoken rule that you need to monitor, get below eighty percent.
Not eighty-seven right now?
Well, unrestricted general fund is eighty-seven percent. And we got, again, you understand, next year, operating budget, we have a lot of one-time money, sixty-six million dollar built in over next three years. That reflection on the, in here. Because we have a lot of one-time restricted money, a lot of unrestricted money. So this is, this is, this is kind of an alarming thing for me, eighty-seven percent. Because our unrestricted general fund is our operating fund. Which we, restricted programs comes with the restricted guideline, like a Title I. You cannot use this money, pay my salary, Dr. Avila or other administrative salary. We pay, we all, that's why you have to pay more attention to your unrestricted side of the operation. More than restricted side, because restricted, it just, you have to spend money for the purpose money was given. Example is the Title I is a lot of money we receive every year. The money is meant for the students, for instructional, non-instructional, everything has to be accounted for. And we have to be in compliance. Make sure when auditors come, they don't find something could jeopardize the program and could be penalized. So that is something we need to be monitor. You heard me saying this, I'm saying again going forward. How much people cost we could absorb and, and monitor. And other things I want to draw your attentions. We get, we get five point zero seven percent COLA. It is historically, it is high. Never been like that. I never seen my thirty-two years of that, because you heard of one percent mega COLA. Because of the, the surprise money. And the subsequent two years COLA is, is not that high, and I will share that number to you tonight. Your subsequent COLA is, I have that number.
You shared it earlier, five point something, right?
Your five point seven percent COLA is for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, which means next year. Twenty-two, twenty-three COLA, two point four eight percent.
Two percent usually would.
I'm sorry?
Above or below two percent is usually what is more normal.
Right.
Yeah. The normal is about two or three percent. That's normal. You know, because of the, how economy, you know, California economy drive. And the twenty-third, twenty-four COLA is a three, three point one one percent. Again, these are all projected. They're all subject to change depending on how economy going to turn over going forward after COVID-19 and subsequent years. None of us can predict what's the next year or subsequent year is going to look like. We can only know what we know now. And so I, these are the numbers, you know, we built into the budget. Again, you heard me, they're all subject to change. If anything between now, prior to our next board, nothing changed. We're going to take this for adoptions, then we have forty-five days after governor sign his budget to revise. Whatever changes reflect on our budget, we have to bring back to you for approval. It is by law. It's called forty-five days revisions after governor sign. If there's no changes, we look good, everything good, there's nothing to bring back to you. After you adopt it at the next board meeting. Because we have to adopt the budget by June thirtieth, regardless what state meet their deadline or not. So we are under the, under the timeline.
Thank you very much.
So I want to, we have to be closely monitor what's going on between now, June fifteen and June thirty. And any changes we know before adoption, we'll bring it to you.
Thank you.
We're closing on, to me, myself, Diane, our staff, we're monitoring every day what's going on. So tonight is not the, we're going to say, this is all we have today, as of today. And if any changes, major changes, we may know, we will bring those changes into, for the adoption. So we'll highlight those changes for you. So in closing, I'm going to say this to the board for the interest of time. Perhaps this is my last presentation to you. Perhaps you know I'm leaving. My thirty-three years of journey going to end June thirtieth. I want to thank you board for your support. And thank you many staff member being with me since beginning of my journey in Rialto up to now. I call it was a very interesting journey for me, Rialto, my last nine years. You know what I mean? But we hold, we hold them together. I could not be here today unless I had your support. I mean it. Because, you know, and it was, it was good or bad, but we, we bring districts in a standing positions. Where we are today, we can be proud of ourselves. What we, what challenge we overcome and where, how we get back to Rialto as a Rialto. Even though you seen it, many of them came out of town to destroy us. Destroy Rialto, destroy Kim Mohammed. So I know I'm getting a little emotional, but I don't want to go that far. I want to, I want to let you know, board. Yes, I appreciate everything you've done. I thank you for your support directly to me. I could not be here today without your support.
And we appreciate all of your hard work, Mohammed.
I thank everyone, everyone with me, their journey to, until now. I thank my team, my staff, they're awesome. And everybody around me directly really support me. I appreciate it. I thank you all. What you have done to me, that will stay in my memory book going forward, my next journey. And I want to thank Dr. Avila, your support, and we've been together last six years. And everybody else. So I want to thank you board, and I'm, I'm, again, I want to thank you.
And we thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Okay, I think I can finally get back to the closing budget session. Okay, a motion and a second.
Second.
All right. Ms. Walker, how do you vote on closing the budget session?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. O'Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you. Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And this section is closed at five thirty-eight. And I will try again. We return at six PM, just to go into closed session. And then we go into the regular session at seven PM, if I'm correct here. There it is. Yes. So, okay, everyone, we're adjourned until six PM. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
6:03 and we're being called to order. So, going back into open session, comments on closed session agenda items. I gotta be able to read through steamed up glasses anymore. Okay, any person wishing to speak on any item on the closed session agenda will be granted three minutes. Dr. Avila, do we have any?
We have none.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to move into closed session, please?
Well moved.
Second?
Thank you. Okay, as provided by law, the following are the items for discussion and consideration at the closed session of the board meeting. Vote by board members, well let me read it. Public employee, employee discipline, dismissal, release, reassignment of employees per government code 54957. C3.2 Student expulsions, reinstatements, expulsion enrollments. C3.3 Conference with labor negotiators. Agency designated representatives, Kwatamak Avila. Superintendent Rhea MacGyver-Gibbs, lead personnel agent, Personnel Services. And Rhonda Kramer, lead personnel agent, Personnel Services. Employee organizations, California School Employees Association, Chapter 203. Rialto Education Association and Communication Workers of America. C3.4 Conference with labor negotiator, Government Code, Section 54957.6. Designated representative, Board President, myself, Joseph Martinez. Unrepresented employee, Kwatamak Avila, Dr. Avila, Superintendent. Okay, board members, gonna poll you to move into closed session. Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. O'Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you. Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And myself. Okay, it's 6:05.
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 199 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 999 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099 1100
Welcome back. This is Rialto Unified School District Board of Education meeting. And our first time back in session, face to face. It's nice. It is 7:09 and we are continuing with the adjournment of closed session. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Stereally so moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Walker and Mr. Montez.
Aye.
It keeps getting better. Okay, now I'll ask for a vote, Ms. Walker.
Oh.
It's all good.
I'm too excited to be here. It's like, yes, aye, what are we doing?
Yeah, adjournment of closed session.
Yes, aye.
Okay, Ms. O'Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you. Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And I am also aye unanimous at 7:10. Open session is reconvened at 7:10 and we start with the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Lopez, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flag never looked so good. Just me. Okay, report out of closed session, Dr. Avila.
Give me one second.
Yep. Feel your pain.
Thank you, President Martinez. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Cristo Frausto, therapeutic behavior strategist. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Avila. And next, we move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And vote on adopting the agenda, Ms. Walker.
Aye.
Ms. O'Kelly?
Aye.
Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, presentations. Alianza Latina District Parent Advisory Group. I am so excited to hear about this. So, presentation on Alianza Latina District Parent Advisory Group by Luvia Nava, President, and Anna Gonzalez, Vice President. Right now, ladies, thank you.
I was told I could take my mask off. All right, well, good evening, Board members, students, staff, parents. My name is Anna Gonzalez and I'm the Vice President of Alianza Latina. I am also a mother of two students that attend the school district. And this message will repeat in Spanish. So, yes, when I conclude. So, rapidito lo voy a decir en español para la audiencia que está escuchando en casa en español. Mi compañera Luvia Nava va a repetir toda esta presentación en español cuando yo concluya con mi parte. So again, I want to thank you all on behalf of this council for the support that the district has given us and for the opportunity to share our group with the board and the community of Rialto today. So, thank you very much, Board and staff, for all your support. So, this group was formed for the purpose of collaborating with the district, employees, staff, parents, and students to support the needs of the Rialto community. So, as you all can see here, we start with our logo, but I'll touch more on it as we move along. Sorry, some technical difficulties.
Ms. Joffrey? While you're there, could you kick in the low filter to get rid of the bottom boominess?
That's right.
What's a nice slogan?
Thank you. All right, so what is the need? So, the need for this group is to increase Latino parent involvement, to inform parents about the benefits of the Rialto Unified School District educational system, programs, and techniques that help students. To also empower the Latino parent community to make decisions that will positively impact their children. All right, and the mission of Alianza Latina is that, as Latinos, we have an enormous richness in our culture that we want to continue to foster, celebrate, and share without leaving out our values and beliefs, which are honesty, justice, peace, respect, responsibility, and solidarity. Our mission as a Latino community is to ensure a quality and comprehensive, inclusive education for our students, families, and community. And our purpose is, our goal is to support our Latino students as a whole and to encourage parental involvement in their children's education. And the aforementioned mission, purpose, will be implemented through the following actions. So, as you can see here, through advocacy, promote education through workshops and conferences, academic activities, fine arts, partner with the community, small businesses and organizations, cultural events and activities, scholarships for students, participate in activities, committees, and district functions to ensure representation of the Latino community. Participate in the development of school and district education plans. And with that, three, is the mic working?
Yes.
And with that, the three most important are advocacy, which ensures that school plans are inclusive and that parents are listened to the needs of the students and create support for parents. The second one is the creation of cultural events and activities. We would like to implement new cultural events throughout the school district and continue the annual celebration of the Day of the Dead and make sure that all schools are participating through this process. And our third main goal is participating in the development of school and district plans, such as the LCAP, allocation of funds for schools, assure that there are resources for both parents and students, and participate and collaborate in the decisions that affect and benefit all of our students. And with that, this is the logo that the group has created. It has all the flags of the Latin American countries throughout North and South America. And here, we have a lovely shirt that we will gladly gift each and every one of you when they arrive. So, you guys can rock our logo. We're working on it. We're starting. And so, you know, Alianza Latina at the bottom, which is the base, is of course our awesome bridge, which is bridging community, parents, students, staff, and everyone involved for the success of every student in this district. And so, we are the Rialto USD Latino Council for Inspiration and Advocacy. And with that, I'll give it to my partner, Luvia Nava, who is the President, who will repeat everything I just said in Spanish, and will take questions after. Thank you.
And before she begins, I would just like to add that the bridge is very particular. It's our district bridge that we developed through the strategic process, understanding that the bridge has been there for many, many years. But I'll share one piece of information, because there's a lot of information on there, but each of those little gaps there along the, like the rail?
Yeah.
Is supposed to be 29, one for each school.
Oh, cool.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches, miembros de la Mesa Directiva, empleados, padres y estudiantes. Mi nombre es Luvia Nava y soy madre de dos estudiantes de este distrito escolar y soy la presidenta de Alianza Latina, el Consejo Latino de Inspiración y Abogacía del Distrito de Rialto. Quiero dar las gracias de parte de este consejo por el apoyo que el distrito nos ha brindado y por la oportunidad de poder compartir nuestro grupo con la Mesa Directiva y comunidad de Rialto. Este grupo fue formado con el propósito de colaborar con el distrito, empleados, padres de familia y estudiantes, y apoyar las necesidades de la comunidad en Rialto. ¿Cuál es la necesidad? Necesitamos aumentar la participación de los padres latinos. Informar a los padres sobre los beneficios que brinda el sistema educativo de Rialto, los programas y las técnicas que ayudan a los estudiantes. Capacitar a la comunidad de padres latinos para que tomen decisiones que impactarán positivamente a sus hijos. Misión de Alianza Latina. Como Latinos, tenemos una riqueza enorme en nuestra cultura, la cual queremos seguir fomentando, celebrando, y compartiendo, sin dejar fuera nuestros valores y creencias tales como honestidad, justicia, paz, respeto, responsabilidad, y solidaridad. Nuestra misión como comunidad latina es asegurar una educación inclusiva, de calidad e integral, para nuestros estudiantes, familias, y comunidad. Propósito. Nuestro objetivo es apoyar a nuestros estudiantes latinos en su totalidad y fomentar la participación de los padres en la educación de sus hijos. Lo antes mencionado, se ejecutará con las siguientes acciones. Abogacía, promover la educación por medio de talleres y conferencias, actividades académicas, bellas artes, asociar con la comunidad negocios pequeños y organizaciones, creación de eventos y actividades culturales, becas para los estudiantes, participar en actividades, comités, y funciones distritales para asegurar la representación de la comunidad latina. Participar en el desarrollo de planes escolares y distritales. De las acciones mencionadas, tres de estas serán las prioridades que cubrirán todas las acciones, como abogacía, asegurar que los planes de las escuelas sean inclusivos y escuchen las necesidades de los estudiantes y crear apoyos para los padres. Creación de eventos y actividades culturales. Queremos implementar nuevos eventos culturales y continuar la celebración del Día de los Muertos. Participar en el desarrollo de planes escolares y distritales, tales como los planes de LCAP, la distribución de fondos en las escuelas, asegurar que haya recursos para padres y estudiantes, y participar en las decisiones que afecten o beneficien a nuestros estudiantes. Nuevamente, muchas gracias.
Okay, Board comments or questions?
Yes. Thank you very much for the presentation. But the Latina is a very diverse culture. And how are we to ensure that it's not the one dominant culture or, you know, region that's representative of all the parent groups? For example, some of the Panamanians feel like they don't have a voice, and some of the Cubans feel like they don't have a voice when they go to the different meetings. So, how are we going to reach out to other parents and make them more engaged so they can feel that they're a part of this movement?
So, if I can answer that. So, this group is going to be an inclusive group that any parent can join, whether they are Latino or not. And as you saw, some of our flags, we do have the Panamanian flag and the Cuban flag. So, we are going to make this a very inclusive group, which we're also going to be collaborating with groups like DAYPAC, DLEC, DAG, to make sure that we are not just, you know, exclusive with only Latinos, but that we are collaborating within other parent groups throughout the district and making sure they participate in all events. So, not only do they embrace the Latino culture, but we can also participate with, like, DAYPAC and also participate in any other African-American.
No, they are Latinas. Yes, they are. But they feel that when they come to, they're Spanish-speaking, but they feel that the parent groups are mainly Mexican-dominated and they don't really have a voice.
or hear someone who speaks Spanish, you know, we are very Eurocentric, right? And then California-centric and we think everybody came just from Mexico and their culture is all the same and it's not. So I was just excited to see the different cultures, the flags of the different countries that represent so many different experiences, not just in outward appearance, but you know, inward in culture. So I'm excited about that and thank you. My question is really about, not necessarily folks who may be first generation or anything from other those countries, but really about the other Latino families who have our second, third and fourth generation United States. And we have left them out, you know what I'm saying? So people think that just because they have a Latino surname, that they should, their family should be participating in ELAC and, you know, those kinds of things. So I'm hoping that, that's the first part, that your organization, this group of parents, are going to be making sure that they are inclusive of our Latino families who maybe more than, you know, have been here in America for many years, who may not speak Spanish or any other type of language, they're English only. So they're also inclusive because their heritage and their concerns, you know, are not actually being met by the current parent groups that we do have. So that was one, but I'm excited about this. I'm like, yes, a diaspora. And then my second question was, is this, is it actually, is it a district parent group or is it a community group? And that looks, is looking to support the, you know what I'm saying? Support parents and the educational aspirations of students. So that's my question. Because I didn't see any kind of like, where are we, who's the, yeah, okay.
No, so to answer your first question, again, that's why that bridge on that logo is so important because we want to be that bridge, that bridges DLEC, DACC, DAYPAC, every other group. A lot of schools have different groups of parents as well. And so we want to be that bridge and that collaborative group that's supporting all parents and making sure that they all feel included and they also learn more about the Latino culture, not just the Mexican culture, which is, you know, that conception. But yeah, I mean, we're willing to work with all parents and that's why all those flags are so important to be displayed in that logo as well. So when people look at that logo, they're like, oh, okay, this is a place for me and it's a safe space where I can also participate and include my thoughts and speak out against my, about my concerns to make sure that all students receive high-quality education again. And then to answer your second question, I'm sorry, repeat your second.
Oh, the second question is just about the organizing. Is this a district, is it proposed as a district parent group? Or is it a community group that is looking to partner and, you know, be a partner to our district?
So we are a district group. We, that was a deliberation that we had with all the members and we decided to be a district group because we want to collaborate with staff, teachers, parents, students. And, but also be that support for the district. And that's why we are willing to come in and be a support group for teachers and staff as well, not only for the parents and students, but for everyone.
So in that, just in reference to our earlier learning session around even the LCAP, so making sure that Alianza Latina would be an organization that we would want to make sure that we have representation from when we're doing our deliberations and, you know, vetting of our LCAP and any other new changes. That's what we're looking at.
Yes.
All right, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Good job.
One more thing here. I'm glad you brought it up because I was raised that I am an American of Hispanic culture or heritage and we are totally, you know, not included. I bring that up because I'm going to hear about it from many of the community as these board members are going to hear about it. So it was a grand faux pas. Please correct it. Otherwise, I will have to pull my support.
I just want to say thank you. Muchas gracias. Su presentación estuvo bien profesional. And I was amazed. I was like, wow. Wow, Anna, I'm amazed that we've come this far, you know. I think that this is a good opportunity for all of the different subgroups, all of the different ethnicities that can fall under this umbrella to come together and work together. Like you said, not everybody with ELAC, not everybody, you know, can relate. And then you also have a lot of Latino families or Hispanic families who don't speak Spanish.
That's right.
You know, and we do have, you know, a good number of, not just community members, but also employees who, staff members who are Afro-Latino, who can also, you know, feel a little more welcome by an umbrella like this. And I think it's awesome. I think it's great. I never thought that a group like this, a parent support group like this would be developed anytime soon. So I congratulate you guys and whoever else came together and working with this. And all I can say is, you know, I can lend my support in whatever way and I'm sure, you know, there's a lot of people in the district and in the community that are willing to lend support in whatever way we can to help, you know, all of our students. So thank you.
Yes, Dr. Avila.
Again, as with each of you, I want to thank the young ladies for coming in and doing this presentation. When the idea was first communicated to me, my first question to them was, how are you going to be different from the other groups that have been here in the district or that are currently here in the district? And that was the first thing that was discussed, is how are you going to be? So part of their response was they want to be inclusive. There have been groups in the district that, not with any bad intention, but end up becoming very enclosed, still helping out the district, but still enclosed, where it would deter other parents from wanting to participate. And so their initial response was that, no, we want to do the opposite and be able to be inclusive. And that was part of the reason for having the visual, the logo with the flags, to let the community know as well that the Latino community is very different, very diverse. And to move away from the stigma or the misconception that all Latinos are Mexicans or Mexican-Americans as well. And so that was part of that. And so I really appreciate them moving forward with that. And earlier this week, I met with them and after they made, you know, a brief presentation of what they were going to share, just to make sure that they felt that it was appropriate. The very first question that I got from, I believe it was Luvia, was, Dr. Avila, do you have any ideas, any suggestions for us to bring in also the non-Spanish-speaking Latinos? And so this came from them. So the group in and of itself is really starting on the right track because they want to do the right thing based on our past history. And so they're here to do their part in trying to correct it, to continue to move our district forward while bringing us together for the greater good.
And I have one suggestion, one suggestion. You need to add the American flag on this tree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what Jill, I think, alluded to.
Simple as that?
Right.
After all, there's no Latinos in America, in the United States, right?
And I can't wait until the DAYPAC and this group gets together because my favorite jazz music is Afro-Hispanic culture music. Anyway, I wanted to hear that. Okay. It gives me great pleasure to recognize student board member Destiny Lopez, our scholarship recipient. Have the podium, please. Okay, I don't, yes, I do have something written up. In the meantime, will you please open this? Tonight, we honor our outgoing student board member, Destiny Lopez. We just graduated from Eisenhower High School last Saturday. Destiny, this entire Board of Education and the superintendent, Dr. Avila, joins in congratulating you for the countless dedication that you have put into this district. The pandemic did not stop you. Were the thousands of students in our district from learning, growing and continuing your education. We wish you nothing but the best and we hope that this scholarship for $2,000 will help you a little on your way to becoming the best OBGYN that this country has ever seen. We all care about you and wish you the best in future endeavors. And we also have another little gift for you.
Now you never got a chance to use it.
Tonight.
And then if you want to say a few words, we're at this table.
Oh my gosh, it's been so long since I've presented anything to you guys from right here. I used to do it all the time. I have some people to thank. I really want to thank the board. You guys have been so very patient with me and so understanding and it has really helped me very, very much and I want to thank, I want to thank my family for sure because they be quiet when we used to do them from inside the house. They were really good about it. They would like put the movies on and go away. And I want to thank them for that because they knew how important it was for me to be a part of this. I want to thank Nutrition Services and Ms. Choffrey and my school support. They have been absolutely amazing the entire time. They have allowed me to really fully be a part of this. They have given me every ounce of information that I needed. So I graduated on Saturday, yay. And then I spent the rest of the weekend reflecting. And I thought about how we plowed through the year so hard. We just kept going and we did not stop. And I was so proud of, looking back, I was so proud because at the time, it didn't feel like anything because it was from the house and it wasn't important. But the legacy that I feel like I've left here has been great. And I've decided to be very proud of myself because of everything that I've done. I've decided that I think I did a good job. And I just want to give advice to the next board member and the next student board member is to use your voice and to be as proud as you want to be and to fully say everything that you think and to ask as many questions as you possibly can. Because education is the key to the next generation of what we need. And education is always going to come down and be the answer to every single question that we have. Well, we have to teach people. We have to show them the way. And I'm really, really proud to be a part of this and to be proud, to be a part of something that truly decided to do that, truly decided to teach people at every step of the way. So I'm a little sad because I was really excited about this year. I was really excited about sitting in my big squishy chair and being very happy about it. So I'm very happy. I'm very happy that it's over because yay, next steps. But I'm very sad to see it go because this was really the highlight of the year after losing so much. Hi. I look so pretty. I can't. But yeah, I'm super proud of us and I'm super proud of being a part of the board. So I'm very, very excited. And thank you for my gavel.
And Destiny, we are proud and honored that you were a student board member with us and wish you all the best in the world.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Okay. Okay.
And then when we hand, I'm here, we can have the board, there's enough distance here. We can have the board with you right in the middle.
There's an unused squishy chair that she deserves a picture of.
In the middle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Board dress?
I know you guys don't follow your, you can follow your own safety. You need to be right here.
I need to, we can't be, no, skinny Jason's flats. We don't need to.
Zoom meeting from a long distance. We have a really good camera this way.
But no, I'm just going to say.
We got it. We got it. Everybody smile. Just kidding. Put your gavel up a little, just away from the, there you go. Wardrobe mounted.
I'm trying to give you glasses that aren't steamed up. Can you get a broken one?
No, most of them are tight.
Can we have one picture real quickly with everybody kind of pointing right over to Destiny? There you go. There you go. Okay. Wasn't her normal, please, before you're coming up? There you go. One, two. Thank you.
Do you have anything on her being the first student board member except your class?
Yes, yes. And she's not, we're not done with the publicity yet for the papers.
You know how impatient I am. I think during COVID, my wife's favorite line, are you impatient or what? Okay. E, comments, public comments not on the agenda. At this person, at this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Dr. Avila?
We have several. First is Janice Kuhn.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. President Martinez, Superintendent Dr. Avila. I am Janice Kuhn and I represent OmniTrans. You've probably seen our green and blue buses zooming around the streets. Well, I have good news for you. I'm here tonight to announce our Free Fairs for Schools program.
That sounds good.
A nice return to school. We are offering free fairs to all students K through 12 within our service area. As you know, there's a measurable link between transportation, student attendance and graduation. And OmniTrans wants to promote equity in the region and help build the next generation of success and ridership within our community.
Could I get you to point the mic a little more towards the door in the corner? The speakers are right above you. It's a problem.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
And although it's called Free Fairs for School, students can use it anywhere. They can take it to the mall, they can take it to the library, they can take it to the community center.
Oh, don't tell them that. They won't come to school.
And it's good on weekends, weeknights, any day that service runs. This is a six-month pilot that will begin August 1st and it will end on February 2022. And if it's successful, we will seek permanent funding and stakeholder fundraising partnerships. And it will be modeled up after our very successful GoSmart program. And it will be modeled up after our very successful GoSmart program, which does offer free fairs for area college students. Our next step is to get with schools. It's a very heavy logistical thing that we have to do in order to ride the bus. Students will just have to show their ID. It's very simple. But they need to have a decal on their ID, and we have decals ready to go. We just need to get with the schools to distribute. So I hope that I can answer any questions that you have later, if you want to set up a meeting. And I look forward to partnering with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maria Sandoval.
Welcome. Procedure, sorry about that.
Bueno, muy buenas noches, Mesa Directiva. Este, Presidente Martinez y Dr. Avila, la audiencia.
Good evening, board member, Mr. Martinez, president, and audience.
Estoy super, super contenta de volver a estar aquí en su presencia.
I'm very happy to be here today in your presence.
Ha sido un año muy, muy difícil para cada uno de nosotros, y este, por eso, de gracias a Dios de estar nuevamente aquí.
It had been a very hard year and very difficult year for all of us, and I'm very happy to be here and thank God to be here too.
Estoy muy contenta, ahora no vengo, usualmente vengo a decir cosas que, ajá, a pelear.
Usually I come to complain.
Cosas que realmente se tiene que decir, ¿verdad?, pero...
For things that I have to say it.
Pero hoy especialmente vengo a dar las gracias.
But today I come to say thank you.
Este, porque me llené de tanta emoción, este, de ver a tantos estudiantes graduándose este pasado fin de semana.
Because I was very happy to see all the graduating students last weekend.
Le quiero agradecer a cada uno de ustedes.
And I wanted to thank each one of you.
Porque con su autorización.
Because with your permission.
La señora Chávez.
Dr. Chávez.
Pudo realizar lo que tenía aquí en su corazón y en su mente para que fuera una realidad para todos nuestros estudiantes.
She could make the students' dream reality with everything that she had done for that graduation.
Mi hijo fue uno de los graduados.
My son was one of the graduated.
Y me llené mucho de emoción, este, que agridulce porque el año pasado fue familiares, amigos, que no tuvieron esta dicha, esta experiencia tan bonita.
It was something bittersweet because last year some of the parents did not have the opportunity to have their students going to and graduate.
Pero también lo entendí que era por nuestro propio salud y nuestro propio bien.
But I understood that it was for our health and our own good.
Pero ver a tantos estudiantes llorar, abrazarse.
But I saw so many students so happy.
En esta graduación que, que de verdad me... No tengo palabras para expresar la emoción tan grande que sentimos, muchos padres de familia, estudiantes, y nuevamente...
Emotional that graduation, so I don't have the words to say how emotional it was for everybody.
Por eso una vez más, gracias, gracias, Dr. Chávez.
So thank you, Dr. Chávez, for everything.
Y a cada una de las personas que hicieron posible este magnífico sueño.
And to each one that he was doing this dream a reality for the students and for the parents.
Que fueron directores, maestros.
Teachers.
Este, y todas las personas que nos tuvieron, fue algo excepcional, algo...
It was exceptional.
Desde la A a la Z.
From A to Z.
Este, todo estuvo fantástico, o sea, cómo nos llevara, nos llevaban adentro, este, cómo nos designaba nuestro asiento, todo superlimpio.
It was really organized, even from the beginning when we get in, enter, all the tips were assigned, everything was fabulous.
Me sentí tan especial y tan bienvenida.
I felt so special and so welcome.
Y voy a volver a decirlo, que es una de las primeras veces que siento eso.
And it's the first time that I feel that way.
Pero ojalá que esto se vuelva a repetir y que no lo dejen a nuestra comunidad y a nuestros estudiantes en un futuro, que las graduaciones se hagan en las escuelas de nuestros hijos.
And that graduation for makes the future, it would be better to have it at the school site. So if, if possible to have it that way, it would be even better.
Que esa emoción a nuestros hijos la tengan, que están con los suyos.
Because it's very emotional for their students to be in their own, with their own.
Otra cosa quiero agradecer enormemente a cada uno, otra vez, que ustedes como Mesa Directiva.
Again, I wanted to thank you, all of you board members.
Y a Dr. Avila.
And Dr. Avila.
Por mantenerse firmes.
Because you were firm.
Este, en no abrir las clases personalmente a nuestros hijos.
And because you didn't open the classrooms to our students.
Y que gracias a esa decisión no tuvimos que pasar las experiencias que otros distritos pasaron. En el ejemplo, mi hermano que vive en Los Ángeles tuvo que pasar.
And because of that, we didn't have the experience the other districts had, like my brother that lives in Los Angeles, Unified School District.
Ya tuvieron que entrar y salir.
Because they went in the classrooms and then they had to get out.
Muchas gracias, este, nuevamente, y gracias. Y otra de las cosas antes que se me olvide, este, este fue el yearbook que gracias, este, se nos obsequió, digo, se nos obsequió.
It was given to us, we didn't have to buy it, so that is a yearbook that they got.
Está precioso, está precioso. Y una calidad muy buena.
It is a very good quality.
Este, gracias también a las escuelas que devolvieron el dinero, este, a los padres de familia.
And thank you to all the schools that returned the money to all the parents for the yearbook, but they received their yearbook.
Gracias por hacer excelente trabajo.
Thank you for your excellency.
That is all we have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Avila. Okay, we move to public comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
We have none.
Okay. Comments from association, executive board members? Rialto Education Association?
We have none.
California School Employees Association?
We have none.
Communication Workers of America?
We have none.
Rialto School Managers Association?
We have none.
Question, could they have called it in still?
Martha? They did not. The option was there.
Okay, but you still can call it in. All right, comments from student board member. That mic should be hot.
Oversight. Angela is here. RSMA.
Oh, okay.
I was just going from the slips, and she slipped in here.
Sorry, good evening.
Ms. Lopez, it's coming to you next.
Sorry, thank you, board. Good evening, President Montez and our esteemed board and Dr. Avila and our viewing audience. So glad to see you all in person. How exciting is that? I want to say to you, Ms. Destiny Lopez, you are leaving a powerful legacy. I love when you said, "I have decided to be proud of myself." So powerful, and I just admire all that you've done this year in terms of representing your peers, the confidence that you had and the advocacy that you showed and displayed during this difficult time. So I just want to commend you for all that you've done this year. Congratulations. And I want to commend our class of 2021, and thank you to our board for allowing the in-person graduations. I'm sure that was a huge thing for our families, allowing them that opportunity to see their kids walk across the stage. So thank you for that, and I think the fireworks were just an added plus to that. We want to take some time this evening to also say farewell to our colleagues. We have many of our leaders retiring this year. And RSMA is just wanting to send them off and say bon voyage and wish them the best as they enter into this new phase of their life, right? Spending time with their family and taking on adventures. And we will have a special celebration for them next Tuesday on the 15th here on the lawn. And hopefully the board members can even stop by to participate. And if you don't mind, it's not a lot of them, so I'd like to commend them and say their names publicly because we're so proud of the service that they've committed to this district for so many years. So just want to say thank you to their service to Ms. Teresa Brown, Dr. Eric Schessler, Ms. Eva Serrato, Ms. Sharon Stratter, Ms. Linda Silva, Mr. Dan Dastrola, Mr. Gary Barnes, Mr. Ronald Ramirez, Mrs. Erlene Hyman, and our very own Mr. Mohammed Islam. So thank you so much for your service. We appreciate you all. And I just want to say to our educational community, let's take this time to make sure that we rejuvenate, take care of ourselves, spend some great time with our family, and be ready for August when all of the kids come back. So thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
I peaked, it's August 9th. Okay. Comments from association? Whoa, wait a minute, going back, 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 there we are. Okay, student board member, comments from you, please. Ms. Lopez.
I exhausted my comments. I said everything that I bullied pointed down to say, so... Hi, everybody, look at us in person and stuff. So cool. Where am I going to college? I'm going to Cal State San Marcos, and I'm studying sociology and health sciences with an emphasis in biology. But thank you to the lady that was in here earlier, she was so nice. Okay, next person.
Okay. Let's see here. Comments from the superintendent, Dr. Avila.
Thank you, President Martinez, and the excitement has already been expressed, but I'll say it one more time, how great it feels to be back in person, modified as it is, but still great to be back live. Winston Churchill once said that there is nothing wrong with change as long as it is in the right direction. So I commend the board for allowing us to come back in person as we transition away from all the limitations that we've been under for close to a year and a half. And congratulations to all the graduates, who I was able to see, most of them this Saturday, participate in their live graduations, to parents, to staff, but especially to the families. I know I've expressed it throughout the last year and a half in thanking them for their understanding, their patience as we adjusted time and time again through this year. And especially in supporting our decision to keep schools closed for the entire year for the sake of stability and for the sake of protecting everyone's health as best as we could. We know it was challenging in many cases for most of us, but nonetheless, we came together as a community and showed our true colors, really weathering it together. And as we exited, I just feel that excitement, and seeing the graduates and the families on Saturday was just icing on the cake for me. Usually it's the highlight of the year, but this year, as you might imagine, it was even more special to be able to see families there celebrating their graduating kids. And as Angela just said, certainly the evening ceremonies had the added benefit of having the fireworks go off as the sun set. It was just amazing and powerful to be a part of that very, very special moment. Also, summer school started yesterday in hybrid. Yesterday was in-person. I was able to visit, I think, nine schools yesterday. But being able to see at least at two of those, was the actual arrival of the kids and the families of the kiddos, just so excited to be back at school. It's just something to, something to see, and again, is part of that feel-good energy as we transition away from what we've been through over the last year and a half. Nutrition Services kicked off its seamless summer food service program this week. And as a quick reminder, our meals are available for all kids ages 1 through 18 on Monday through Friday from 11:30 to 12:45 p.m. at selected locations across the district. And Nutrition Services will be hosting a summer kickoff barbecue event tomorrow at Chavez Huerta from 11:30 to 12:45. The summer meal service runs until July 30th, 2021. And the mighty Eagles are flying high. The Lady Eagles basketball team from Eisenhower High School is headed to the CIF championship game tomorrow. They will be traveling to Menifee to take on Paloma Valley High School for the CIF title. And also a big congratulations to, let's see, whom do we have? Carter High School and Eisenhower High School girls softball teams, Carter High School baseball and wrestling team, and Rialto High School boys volleyball, girls soccer, girls basketball teams for making it into the playoffs and deep into the playoffs this year. Congratulations to all of them. And also just want to wish everybody who is a father, a Happy Father's Day this weekend.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. I'm gonna put you on the spot here. I have not got confirmation as to my, my information being accurate, so I'm going to ask you about esports in our middle and high schools. Could you tell us about that?
Dr. Chávez, can you assist me with this? But I understand that all of our middle schools will be having esports for this coming year. Is that correct?
We have Cussera, Friski Middle School, and Rialto Middle with esports. And at high school level, that's actually going to be a... I just got excited, I'm so excited.
We can hear you just fine. The screen is up, I know.
So, great question. So we are really excited to have the esports program at Cussera, Friski, and Rialto Middle this upcoming school year. It's actually going to be a class, so our students will be, I can move this up, I'm tall. Our students are going to be in an actual class with an instructor, and they're going to be learning about esports, and it's such a lucrative industry. And so, great, great for them. And then at the high school level, it's going to be an actual sport, so it's a CIF sanctioned sport. And we have a team with coaches at Eisenhower and at Rialto High School. So we're excited. We are looking at facilities, we're building labs, we are purchasing equipment, and it's just exciting.
And for the community listening at home, could you just explain what esports is, please?
Sure. So it's a competitive program online with video games.
Awesome.
And it's a huge industry. We have young people making millions of dollars right now competing in esports, just like our, you know, athletes do in NFL. So it's exciting to be able to prepare our students for that.
Question, and Dr. Chávez, are there colleges, universities that also provide scholarships for students majoring now in esports?
Yes, there are, but I don't have details on that, so I would, I would have to look into that. But yes, there's, and not so much colleges, but industries.
So can I visit these classrooms and play Nintendo?
So they're specific, they're specific video games that are being looked at by grade levels. So for example, at the high school, it is League of Legends, I believe, and Fortnite. And so it's very specific games. I trust, I've tried to play them, and they're very complicated, so go Nintendo, but they're interesting.
And any plans for the other two middle schools as far as esports, or that they opt to do something else other than esports?
So, you know, we are looking, you know, there's some technicalities. We are looking at facilities, space, you know, staffing. And so if this is something that is viable at the sites, it's definitely something that we'd like, we'd like to see secondary-wide at all of our sites.
Thank you, and I didn't hear Carter High School mentioned.
Not yet, not yet, but, but Robin McMillan was very excited to start that at Rialto Middle, and we know that she will be at Carter, so I'm sure that's something that she's looking forward to bringing to Carter.
No one's more excited than I am. I was able to talk to a parent who said, "My son's not going to college." I said, "You obviously haven't heard about esports." The kid lighted up, just lit up. And mom said, "Oh, thank you. Now there's hope," basically. So there are ways to get our students interested in college.
Absolutely. Total engagement opportunity for our kiddos, so we're really excited.
Yes, thank you. Okay. All right, Ms. Walker, it's coming your way.
Thank you. I just want to say...
Um, I just want to say, you know, for everyone, I am so excited to be here today. I mean, you probably saw it or heard it when I was just saying aye and yea to everything because I'm just glad I can see you asking a question in person versus delayed, uh, on, on WebEx. Uh, so, just excited to be here. Um, excited for the end of this school year as well, for many reasons. Many like the parents who've dropped off kids for summer school, like, "I can get my kid out of the house." Um, the other piece is, you know, culminating the year and celebrating with everyone as well. Celebration to Destiny and your class of twenty twenty-one because this has been an unprecedented year, not even unlike class of twenty twenty because they at least had half a year where they could engage and, and be together. But you had an entire year of which most of you never met each other, uh, in your classrooms. And so, to be a part of one of the graduations last week, I came in straight out of town to jump in on Carter's last graduation and to see the families that were there supporting, the cheering, the energy. I was able to present, uh, and, and present the class, accept the class alongside of, uh, our, our very own student board member, um, there. And just, just excited for the families to be able to have that. Um, and so, Destiny, I hope that, you know, while you're saying you, you're, you're allowing yourself, um, to say that you did a good job. There is nothing else that you have done. I remember you from the first time I met you in middle school. I walked in telling, uh, Saidah, you know, "Your girl is gonna be gone." I remember that. And you were presenting at the stage, and you were in middle school. And you came up smiling and energy, and all the other little middle schoolers who still had their arms crossed around their waist and, you know, just kind of, you know, standing off in the back, their voices low heads and everything. And you came up there just as bubbly, like, "We're gonna do this." And we may get it wrong. And sometimes you did. And Saidah had to pull you in, like, "Hey, Destiny," you know, she's like... But just from that very first time, I remember the energy, the poise, the presence. And just to understand, I knew at twelve years old, I don't know, I think you were in seventh grade, yeah. I knew, yeah, I, I saw something there as well as everybody else had seen. So, don't think about the fact that you're allowing yourself to say that you did great. You're doing great, right? It's all day. As long as you own it, it comes out, right? Even in your hesitancy, we saw it. I just, uh, am thankful that we have been a part of your journey. Um, hoping that, you know, whether or not you become an, uh, a, a physician, um, I want to put this in your head right now because, you know, I see leadership in you. That may be outside of the medical, uh, field. Okay, I'm just, just, you know, the impressive path is good, but, but the purposeful path is something else. So, just think about that piece, and hopefully that college will give you those opportunities to develop all of those things that we've seen you, that I've seen for the last six years in you. Um, and again, congratulations to you and your class of twenty twenty-one, Ms. Lopez. Um, that's my first thing. Uh, second thing. Mohammed. I am so... This is like the end of the era, I mean, really. Um, because our relationship actually began in San Bernardino. And I was so excited when I, um, um, became a board member here in Rialto. And you were already here. And I said, "If nothing else, our money's gonna be right." Our money will be right because Mohammed has a capture on this money no matter what. If anybody else is blocking or anything, like, if you talk to Mohammed, he's gonna tell you the real. And, and you may not even want to hear it, but it will be real, and we will be solvent. Everything is there. Um, and at a time when I came into the board, there are many districts in California, especially Southern California, that were experiencing, um, questionable, um, practices around their solvency, around their reserves, around practices. You know, we've seen many, we saw many, uh, boards being replaced, taken over by the state. We've seen superintendents being left of their jobs, all in this last six years that I've been a board member. And I've just been proud. You gave us respectability in the work that we've done and as leaders, as, and, and overseers of a district, and being confident to say that if nothing else, there are a lot of things and variables that we have, but we have not done anything wrong around financing. And we're solid, and we're preparing, and we're building. But you have given us that foundation here in this district. And I am proud to have been, um, a board member that has been able to be able to support you, support the budgets, um, and, and kick us back in line too when we were thinking, "Yeah, let's spend that." And you're like, "Hey, you know, watch this." Um, but I've been proud to be a part of your administration and your legacy here, uh, in Rialto. I wish you well in whatever happens after this. And I know you, I know it's not like you're gonna go home and sit in Netflix and chill. So, uh, I wish you well, travels and everything. Um, and, you know, I'm gonna be around. So, if you just gonna drop me down, I know it's not, you know, touchy-feely and all of that kind of stuff. But thank you for allowing me to be a part of your legacy. So, Mr. Mohammed. For the district itself, again, we've got one more board member. I was trying to count them. I'm like, "Is this the last one for the..." And it's not. We still have another one. But I think this is my gusto tonight. Again, thinking about where Rialto goes and where we've been over the last year and a half, thinking about the opportunities, the changes and shifts that we've had to go to, the opportunity now that with the state, you know, even putting more financial resources in our hands, requiring us to think differently, be different, and looking and seeing about even some of the plans that we, we were able to, um, hear about tonight in the, uh, LCAP learning session that we had, listening to what was going, what's going on with our budget and where we're gonna be placing our money, and then hearing this, this great opportunity about these esports. Thinking about the fact that Rialto, we set out years ago when we began our strategic plan, talking about how we would incorporate the needs of not only the students, but the community and then the world, right? This global thing. And how are we positioning ourself for global citizenship? Not in just this kind of fancy, we just say global citizenship. But really, what are we doing around the systems that we build here in this district? And this was the capture that just, that esports, right? And it's not about necessarily, "Oh, because kids won a game." No, it's about having purposeful pathways for our students. It is about being creative and innovative. And the last thing is about being futuristic, that we are not stuck in the past. We witnessed the last year and a half, it will never be the same. So, although we're here again, we will never, this boardroom, what happens here will never be the same. So, I thank you for the staff who have put the time and energy to investigate and to make something come to fruition that is not only about here and things that our students are interested in and purposeful, right? And not only, not, purposeful for the students and that create an opportunity that we may not even know anything about, right? We're still like, "What? Is it, is it pong? Can you play pong?" For those of you who are real old. Can you play pong in the class? But if we don't even understand that piece, but to be comfortable enough to say, "We're gonna move and move ahead," right, without knowing all of these other pieces, is a statement and a testament to our leadership. So, as we just had a discussion about ensuring that we have great leadership, we've got a great man on hand that will lead us into this new era of what schools look like. Esports was just the icing on the cake for me tonight, to say, "We are doing the right things. We have made the right decisions." Dr. Avila, you've placed the right people in the right places to make sure that we are in the place we need to be for the future of Rialto and our own communities. I'm just a proud, proud board member. I'm appreciative of the place that I've been able to put and be, and meet the people that I've been in. COVID and the pandemic has changed my family drastically. But it has made me, give me an opportunity to think about the things that I value, the things that are important, and really the things that matter. And as I sit continually for this seat until my next, until the, the duration, this next term is out, I want to just make sure that I am still holding myself accountable to those things, that I am holding myself and being accessible, um, for those who need me in this position to be the voice for them. So, that parent group, again, this is all, right? How do we become, uh, something new and different that is inclusive and that is futuristic? But I also want to make sure that, when this is all said and done, that we have left, that I have left, a better world than we came in. The seat that I seat is the better seat, the opportunities that are there. And that we think about this, as this is our first meeting back in person, we think about the next meetings that we'll have together, and that we plan with all of these things that I just talked about, with that as a catalyst for the rest of the times that we have together. Thank you. I know it's long, but...
Okay, Ms. O'Kelly.
Oh, well, I, of course, want to give a hearty congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-one and all of the graduates. Uh, watching the graduations just brought back a lot of emotions for me. It does every year. And, uh, but that's what we're all here for. That's, that's the final exam for us, is watching you kids walk across the stage. So, um, and we wish everyone the very best. Yes, I agree. Twenty twenty-one, that class, you, you, you got the short straw. But you know what? Karma has a way of making things up. So, hang in there. Things are gonna get better. And pretty soon, this will be something you don't even think about. And I also want to say, uh, I wanted to say that, uh, being here tonight is exciting. Between the graduations and being here tonight, it's, it's a touch of normalcy again for what we're used to. And I'm, I'm just grateful to have it. And Mohammed, you will be greatly missed. Uh, I can't thank you enough for doing such an outstanding job as associate superintendent for our district. You have implemented so many excellent ideas in this district, and we are moving further ahead because of your efforts. Thank you very much, and we will miss you. And that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Clerk Lewis, your first one from the dais.
Well, let me move it on up here. Um, twenty twenty-one has been fantastic for me. I experienced my first graduation. I was given instruction. I experienced my first board meeting and presence. And my son graduated. I'm having a, um, graduation hangover. I'm exhausted with joy. But the first seven years, I was in that special education. And it just warms my heart that I saw in a budget that you would make that administration for special education better. I toured the wellness centers, but to be a parent with a three-year-old, and you're over there, and it's so sterile. And you're locked in a room for all these testing and testing. And for seven years, every evening when I would get off work, we would go here for auditory verbal. And he transitioned. And he blossomed. And he succeeded. But when we make things better for the ones that you think, just because outwardly they're different, you make it better for everyone. And, um, I don't like to share his story because, you know, he's of age where, you know, it's his life. But, you know, when I was able to participate in the graduation at Eisenhower and then go to his graduations, and then to read that you guys are really trying to make things holistic and comprehensive, this is a joy that every parent wants to see. This is why I ran. This is the part where you said, um, you have your sports at Eisenhower, then you have your esports. Well, let's put the cherry on top and have Special Olympics. Let's do it all. This is Olympic year. Let's make sure esports are inclusive because a special gift is esports, that you can be in a wheelchair and you can play on computer. When I went to the, the learning skills in these junior highs where they're doing learning skills, I mean, the laundromat have better washing machines. I mean, you know, these, the equipment and those learning skills or self-skills, it's not even adaptive. It's not, no Siri, no touch. I mean, our, our, our special needs are automated, you know? So, I look, we, we have to do better because in their world, you know, they know touchscreens. They know Siri, turn on the light. Siri, turn off the light. Siri, find the state. They know those things. Alexa, Google, you know? So, I am so overjoyed because you just don't know, uh, that parents are tired. And, and working parents are tired, tired, tired. And, and my husband was a partner, and we would draw, "Who's gonna go to that special education room first?" "It's your turn." And, and my husband would go, "Happy Father's Day to him," and he would sit outside. I'm like, "You're not even playing the games with the teacher or doing the homework. We got to do some homework, or they're gonna say we're gonna be a bad parent." So, he'd do like two assignments, you know, to turn in. But the struggle is real, and I celebrate with everyone and Destiny. Um, you know, healthcare is good. You can do both. And you could be a leader. And, you know, we're always competing for the, for the top. But I've learned in education, which, uh, everyone here on the board and all the, the cabinet and the teacher and the parents have really said, "You know, we're the same." It all comes down to understanding, and knowledge is power. But the biggest thing is sharing that knowledge, sharing that power, having joint decisions. So, these are tears of happiness. These are tears of a lot of sugar over the weekend. These are, are tears of the progress as a board that we're really making it holistic. We're making this, uh, friendly for the students, for the parents, for the teachers, for the administrator. We have committed to our, our top administrator. We made that commitment tonight. And so, we are moving forward. I don't want to look back. I don't want normal. I want better than normal. We want to set the standard in Rialto. And, um, I just thank you for, for all your support. And, you know, I'm just so happy to, to share, and we're making things better.
Vice President Montez.
All your guys' speeches are very good. It's gonna be very hard to follow. I don't got a whole lot. So, um, first and foremost, I want to, um, congratulate all of the class of twenty twenty-one. Um, uh, I want to congratulate our student board member. I want to congratulate, um, uh, like, uh, Mrs. Maria Sandoval said, her, her son and their family on their graduation. Again, uh, to my goddaughter, Dalia Torres at Eisenhower High School, um, and, and all of the Ivale Victorians, Salavitorians, and all the schools. This year, um, we got, we got to do the graduations in person. They were divided up because of the restrictions. Uh, I believe there's only three tickets actually that the students were able to give to family and friends. So, um, I've, I've made an effort to try to go to every single graduation, and, and I think I've been to almost all of them. But, uh, it was just impossible to do this year because all three high schools had three different graduations, and it's hard to be there, uh, three different high schools at the same time. But I made an effort to go to each school. And, uh, I want to, um, thank, uh, the principals, the staff members, uh, safety and security, communications, everybody that made it possible because, um, they were joint efforts. Uh, you know, um, uh, and, and, and the district, thank you. Um, I think the parents were very happy. The community was very happy. Um, it was a very special and emotional time for many people. Shoot, this is our new board member's first school board, uh, board meeting live, and I think our student board members too. And, and, you know, and, 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 uh, with everything, um, you guys, um, both of you guys have really done an awesome job, even through the Zoom, the WebEx and the teleconference meetings. And, um, it feels like you guys, well, because you were here the whole time. So, um, it, it's like it's your first meeting, but it's not. So, so thank you guys for all of your help. And, um, I want to, uh, also, um, congratulate all of the employees that are retiring. Uh, we've got, uh, some heavy hitters that are retiring this year. Um, and what I mean by heavy hitters is people that have been a big part of this district, a big part of this community, a big part of the district family, um, people who have, um, you know, been here for a really long time, made a lot of sacrifices here, uh, you know, um, and, and just done tremendous things for this district. And, um, some of those names were read out earlier. And I do, uh, want to give a special thanks to Mr. Mohammed Islam, but I'm gonna reserve those comments for the next board meeting because I have a feeling that at the next board meeting, not only him, but a bunch of other individuals will, will... not only him, but a bunch of other individuals will will be recognized or thanked at that meeting. And I'll reserve my thanks for you at that time, Mr. Islam. But thank you. I also want to just say that I went to Morgan Elementary School this morning to drop off my son. Today was his first day of school. He missed yesterday because he wasn't feeling well. But it was nice to see all of the parents dropping off their children, all of the children getting off their parents' cars or, you know, being walked by the parents entering the school. They were doing the whole nine yards, the temperature checks. Everybody had their masks masks on, you know. And 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 I just think that it was really nice to see that 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 community again, you know, that 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 bonding of of the of the students, the parents, the the school employees welcoming the children back onto the campus. So that was really exciting for my son and for myself as a parent. The esports, you know, they they've been talking about this industry for a while now. And my wife actually is on the Workforce Development Committee for San Bruno County. And she was telling me about a program that they're offering where they're paying students to learn to fly drones. And they're actually actively recruiting youth who are good at video games. Because that's how you fly a drone, like playing a video game. So anyway, I'm excited to hear that the district is starting this program, has started this program, and will be expanding it because it is a can be a lucrative business industry. And and like I've always said, if we find, if we can find what the kids' passion is, what the students' passion is, that can open the gates for college, for education and so and whatnot, you know. So thank you, Dr. Chavez, and everybody else who's involved with that. And then just last and and just lastly, happy Father's Day to all the all the dads out there and the dads-to-be. I know it's not easy being a dad. I know it's not easy to be a father. Sometimes we get beat up. We get yelled at. But but, you know, it's, you know, it's not easy. It's not easy, you know. I know it's nothing like being a mother. It's way better to be a mother, a lot greater to be a mother. But fathers deserve, you know, some credit. Fathers deserve some credit, and and sometimes we get things right. So to all those dads out there, I know what it feels like. I know what it feels like to be a father too. So thank you for what you do and thank you for, you know, for being a father. So happy Father's Day to my dad and everybody else's dad. And thank you.
Well, board members, staff, Rialto family, welcome back. This this is great. We made it. We we launched another class, Class 21. So proud of you. You learned. You were a class of many firsts. You had to learn skills that you didn't have or may not have had. Some of you probably were good at reading, good at self-starting. But then you also found out what you needed to improve on. So you are way ahead of many of your previous class peers. I'm trying to say that it usually takes somebody into until their twenties to really have aha light, go on and go, oh, I really have to get up earlier to make it to work or to school on time or to get my homework started, or 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 the list continues. But due to COVID, which was a very negative thing for the world and continues to be, you were forced into learning skills quickly. You were given the opportunity to face yourself in the mirror and look at your long suit, your strengths, or your short suit, your shortcomings. I don't know of any other seventeen, eighteen, and below age that had to to go through that. It's been a hundred years since the last pandemic. So it really, first of all, COVID is not at all positive, other than now people are getting vaccinated and hopefully it's in our rearview mirror for a long time. But there were some pluses. And it was all because of people having to reskill, you know, stay late even though they felt tired, respond to emergencies for when we had the malware. And yet they had to get ready for students again quickly. So we're coming out the other end quite a bit improved personally and educationally. Not everyone will see that yet. But it really forced us into reevaluating priorities every every way. All of a sudden, you were faced with life and death situations at your age and younger. So Rialto, thank you for supporting the schools. Rialto family, thank you for supporting the schools and the community. I couldn't ask to be president of a better board or a better school district. You guys rock. Just thanks. You you got us through. We're heading on a positive upward trend. Yeah, we're losing a lot of good friends, good people, people that there are some big shoes left there. But on the other hand, you've trained a lot of good people to fill your shoes. So there's a lot of leadership that was realized. And maybe you didn't realize you had leadership skills, Destiny. You do. And all the adults, you do. I trust your judgment. I trust your work. And we're here to back you. We're here to make it better here for our kids, for our staff. And I couldn't ask for a better group of folks to do it with. So just give yourselves a a great hand. I appreciate all of you. Yes, go ahead.
I forgot to mention one thing. Now that the tier levels of risk have drastically gone down, once the state gives authorization to reopen, we should consider following suit. I've heard I've heard the
June fifteenth.
I've heard June fifteenth might be the day. But some of the schools are on a hybrid. I don't know how that would impact them. But it wouldn't be a bad idea to consider what we can do to reopen the schools if it's deemed safe. So maybe we can look at that.
We've got till August ninth to make that committed. We're committed to August ninth already.
We'd already decided to open up next fall.
Yeah, the expectation is that we will open up. We're just pending any adjustments, changes to the existing policies, guidelines.
Yes, the change overnight. Okay, let's continue on here. Okay, it is time to go into public hearing.
Move to open public hearing.
Thank you. Seeing a lot of positive came out of those online meetings.
Now we're ready to move forward.
Yeah, okay. Vote by board members to open the public hearing. Ms. Walker.
Aye.
Ms. O'Kelly.
Aye.
Clerk Lewis.
Aye.
Vice President Montez.
Aye.
Myself. I, time is eight thirty-six.
Since we're we're live and we're all here, do we have to go person by person? Or can we do like we used to do, all in favor say aye, any opposed say no?
Well, for the record, it's
Makes it a lot shorter.
Yeah, but we'd probably drive Martha crazy. I've got three votes all in a row. No, I'm not going to do that to you. Okay, this is 2021-22 Local Control and Accountability Plan, or the LCAP, one of the LCAPs. Education Code Section 52062 B as in Baker, one, requires that a governing board of a school district shall hold at least one public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed to be included in the Local Control and Accountability Plan or annual update to the Local Control and Accountability Plan. The agenda for the public hearing shall be posted at least seventy-two hours before the public hearing and shall include the location where the Local Control and Accountability Accountability Plan or annual update to the Local Control and Accountability Plan will be available for public inspection. And for the public, could we hear how we have done that? Because we've done it through committees with many parents involved. But who can give the public some kind of feedback on that? Okay, we have Dr. Chavez coming up.
Mr. Martinez, do you mind repeating the question?
Okay, just how do we get input from the public? How has it actually been? Because this makes it sound like they could come tonight and give public comment, even though, to my understanding, we've given plenty of opportunity before.
Do you want to go ahead and take? Okay.
Wow, they're they're saying me. No, let me, let me.
Well, good evening once again.
Ms. Hachko.
I'm a little bit height different than Dr. Chavez. Basically, what we do is we've placed that draft online. And we have a Google form that's bilingual, English and Spanish. So if anybody reviews the plan and has any comments, you know, before it's actually officially approved by all of you, that that can be filled out. And we've done that every single year. We also have a physical copy available, you know, if they want to view it. And we can give them a printout of that form as well.
Okay, and are we still taking public comment if they wish to go online and look?
Absolutely. That form is going to be there, you know, for the duration. So until the twenty-third, it's going to be up there and we review to see if there's any responses.
Okay, so just check on the district website?
Yes. So if you go to the district website, there is a link on the very front page that says LCAP. And that's where we have archive of some of our parent meetings. Again, the draft copy is there. And then the infographic, which is more user-friendly for parents, that was in our template through document tracking. So they can take a look at it there. But there is a form they can click on, that anybody in the public can click on and give feedback.
And parents who speak languages outside of Spanish and English, there is a translation service available for them if they request.
Outstanding.
Yeah, we have that service available through multilingual programs.
Thank you very much. Okay, board members, questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Motion and a second to close public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Walker, how do you vote? Ms. O'Kelly.
Aye.
Clerk Lewis.
Aye.
Vice President Montez and myself, aye. Time is eight forty. Okay, and we have open public hearing.
Move to open public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Walker, on opening
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Ms. O'Kelly.
Aye.
Clerk Lewis.
Aye.
Vice President Montez. And myself, aye. Time is eight forty-one. I think they want me to speed this up. Okay, fiscal year 2021-22 proposed budget. Education Code Section 52062 B as in Baker, two, requires that the public meeting at which a school district's governing board adopts a local control and accountability, excuse me, accountability plan, LCAP, and adopts a budget must be held after, but not on the same day as the public meeting at which a governing board holds a required public hearings on the LCAP and the proposed budget. So tonight we did hear and see a budget proposal. And what is the date we will be voting on this, Mohammed?
Twenty-third.
Next board meeting, the twenty-third. Okay.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
What did I tell you, public? They're after me. Okay, Ms. Walker, how do you vote to close public?
Aye.
O'Kelly?
Aye.
Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Vice President Montez.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Eight forty-two. Not sure I'm up to up to this speed yet. I'll get there. Okay, consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for public individual action. Motion and a second?
I have a question regarding G three.
Okay, let's get a motion and a second, and then then we'll go right to you.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. The floor is yours for questions. Clerk Lewis.
Yes, on the item G three point twelve. It says no cost, but in the narrative, there is a cost associated with that, looking on page.
G three point three?
G
Three point twelve.
Three point twelve, yes.
And that is amendment to the agreement, C twenty-one zero zero four one, with Anna Corleau from St. Catherine's of Sienna Private School for Title III Public Services. And this is to approve amendment number one to agreement C twenty-one zero zero four one for Anna Corleau to provide extra day services during non-school hours to students identified as English learners at St. Catherine's of Sienna Private School at no cost to the district.
Yeah.
Ms. Madrid, Dr. Madrid.
Good evening, Board President Martinez and Board Members, Superintendent. There is no cost to the district because that was already approved at the beginning of the school year. This is just an amendment to go ahead and change the amount of money so that Ms. Corleau can continue tutoring services for students because one of the teachers that was going to provide services is no longer able to.
So this is tutoring versus extended extended day learning at St. Catherine. It's tutoring.
Does that answer your question?
Well, it's just, it's sort of
What do you need for clarification?
Well, the amendment should sort of match. So this is a tutoring to provide three to four. So this is tutoring just for English learners?
Yes, the English learners
Before school and after school?
Yes, English learners identified at St. Catherine of Sienna. We are obligated to provide services to students within our geographical area. And they have indicated that they needed that support.
Is this time-sensitive or can it be brought back for the next board meeting?
It is time-sensitive in that the teacher needs to be able to provide that those tutoring services. There is no change in the dollar amount. There is no additional dollar amount. What the amendment is for is to allow Ms. Corleau to do additional hours, to provide additional hours of tutoring because one of the teachers that was on the original agreement is no longer able to provide those services to the students.
My question is why it wasn't just written as tutoring instead of like extended day services? To me, it seems like a like a daycare or after-school program versus tutoring. So I feel more comfortable if it is tutoring, that for English learner, that should state that. If it's extended daycare, then it should be opened up to any If it's extended daycare, then it should be opened up to anyone who live within that area. So that's what I was-
Could you clarify?
It's a gentleman question, but, but it's in fact tutoring. And this is title, Title III monies?
Yes, it's Title III money, which is federal money that is used to support-
earmarked for-
For English, yes.
And, and Saint Catherine's churches within the district boundaries?
Yes.
So their students technically deserve some of this, some of these services that money's been earmarked for.
Yes, they do qualify for these services, yeah.
It just seems to be such a low-cost tutoring versus what we were approving for tutoring. It matches more with daycare, so I just wanted clarification. If it's extended daycare, then it should be open. If it's tutoring, then it should be stated that way for clarity.
How many years has this been going on this way?
This is my sixth year in the position and it, it's, you know, since I started. It has been a service that we provide to schools within our area. And I'm sure that it has existed even longer than that. And point taken about the extended, you know, day services. You know, I'll definitely make sure to put that in the next time that this item comes to board.
I was just wondering, because every church, you know, around that area, they will look, just trying to, you know, transparency and clarity. So if we can just sort of word it, let's actually state it, I feel more comfortable in voting.
Yes, definitely. And there are only about twenty-two students that are English learners at that site. That's why the amount is low.
So for next time, we can word it that way, but that, that's the service that's gonna be provided?
Yes.
So we can vote on it tonight?
Well, no cost, yes. Okay, does that answer your question, Clerk Lewis?
Well, yeah, answer my, I just wanted to vote for what's stated, that's all. It's just, I think it should be clear, you know, how many hours are these English learners are getting? What are they being tutoring in if it's tutoring? Not if it's daycare, we're doing arts and craft, and that's a different thing, which is okay too, but it needs to be clear. Want to make sure that our parents who are English learner are getting the tutoring or the reading or whatever, because we have new programs that we can sort of assist with that.
Point taken, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Madrid.
So I prefer for it to be pulled with clarity, and then we can vote at the next.
But it's time-sensitive.
It's time-sensitive, so we really can't. Okay, preferential vote by student board member?
Are we voting on the whole consent calendar?
On that, well, let, let me ask it this way, do we have any more polls or questions or comments? Yes, Ms. O'Kelly?
I have questions on H five.
Okay.
H five is off the consent calendar.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong section.
Yeah.
Well, we could vote on the whole thing when we're done.
Well, it's because Ms. Lewis might choose to vote differently since.
Okay, that's easy enough to do. Okay, by request, we are voting on item G twelve, G three twelve, G point three, point twelve. And, okay, we have a motion and a second, so going by roll call vote. Ms. Walker, how do you vote on G three twelve?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. O'Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you. Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Okay, Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, board. Ms. O'Kelly, you have the floor.
No, this is, mine is a discussion action item, I was looking at the wrong section.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll cover that when we get to it.
Okay, fair enough. So, board, are we ready to void on, vote, void, yeah?
On the rest of the items?
Vote on the rest of the items?
I do have G three, point thirteen.
Okay, go ahead.
So with this career technical program improvements, going back to page forty-six, is this the title, like which funding? Is this like a title, a special funding that's just for capital improvements, or?
Okay, we have-
I couldn't really-
Two of the most knowledgeable people about it, which, which one of you would like to take? Okay. Ah, okay.
No worries, we'll-
Go ahead and ask a question, we have people that can answer.
Yes, what's the, what's the funding source for those improvements?
So the Perkins funding is a grant fund from the State of California.
Okay.
The funds come into the district so that we could provide career technical education services, and there's a whole list of different things that we have, that are eligible for us to spend that money on. And so we create a plan and then we use those funds to follow that plan.
Okay, so with the funding, since you do have the special needs population, will this be a source of funding to upgrade some of these learning skill centers in some of these schools?
So the funds are restricted for career technical education classes only. And so some of the regulations that go along with that are that the teacher, whatever it is that we're spending the funds on, it has to go to the classrooms of a teacher that holds a career technical education certificate or certification. In that, access and equity are pieces that we are, we are looking in how to better support, so to be more inclusive in those classrooms. In particular, you're mentioning something in particular, and I'm-
You're saying hospitality, you know, and then on your descriptions, you have it listed there. I'm just concerned that a lot of times you put one population and you're a narrative, but none of the funding go to that source or upgrading the equipment. So, you know, hospitality or trades or child development, I get that, but some of the centers, the one center is what, that they have to be transported to?
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to upgrade the centers at the school sites?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The culinary, the culinary academy at Rialto High School is being upgraded at this rate.
Okay. So that was just actually at the site?
So, yes, so at the site level, yes. We are, we use those funds at the site level to support all of the career technical education classes. So your example of the hospitality class, yes, both at Rialto High School and at the Chavez Huerta Center, and then all of the other trade classes as well, yep.
Thank you, that was it.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Lewis. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on the rest of them. We already passed G three twelve. And now we'll work on all of the consent items. If I can find where I'm at. There we are. Okay.
Page three, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all items on the consent calendar will be enacted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action, which we have. So we are on to preferential vote by student board member Lopez.
I'm not sure if you received the second?
Second?
Yes, yes, we did.
We did a first and a second on the, the other items.
Okay, so-
We should get a first and a second on the rest.
I had it already, but that's okay. Let me have, again, a motion and a second on consent calendar items.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, now, preferential vote by student board member.
Aye.
Thank you.
Walker, aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
Aye.
It's easier that one.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, board members. Time eight fifty-five. Tell you, folks, they're way ahead of me. And that's okay, I like it that way. They are all on the ball, serving the public, and again, board members, thank you. Okay, item H, discussion action items. Award bid number twenty twenty-one, zero-zero-four for the L Wing HVAC upgrade at Eisenhower High School. Okay, motion and a second, please?
So moved?
Hardly move.
Second?
All right, thank you.
If you've ever been up there.
This is to award bid number twenty twenty-one, oh-four for the L Wing HVAC upgrade at Eisenhower High School to WCM and Associates, Inc., for a total cost not to exceed four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, no cents, no dollars, and to be paid from Fund Thirty-five, the State School Facilities Fund. Questions, comments, board?
Ms. Martinez?
Yes, Vice President Montez?
Ms. O'Kelly, where's the L Wing?
Up at the, by the north parking lot, and there's no air in that entire wing. And we taught welding, we taught woodworking, we taught woodshack, right, I mean-
Is that where all the scrap metal's at?
Yeah. Hot as heck, I would use another word, but I won't.
Heck is fine.
Yes.
And yes, they deserve it. Okay, no other questions? Ms. Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
O'Kelly?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Montez?
Aye.
Myself, aye, unanimous. H two, approve purchase of Fortinet firewall equipment.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Thank you. And this is to approve the purchase of Fortinet firewall equipment, including three years hardware and software support from Converge One utilizing National Association of State Procurement Offices Agreement seven fifteen seventy, thirty-four, three, at a cost not to exceed one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, two hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents to be paid from the general fund. Questions or comments? This is standard procedure, three years is a good term, that's the longest they offer. Great, great to see this. Okay, vote by board members, Ms. Walker?
O'Kelly, aye.
Aye.
Lewis and Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye. They're gonna run me over, folks. Okay, agreement with elevation with two L's.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Thank you. This is to approve a renewal agreement with elevation to support the effective monitoring of approximately five thousand, six hundred and fifty-five English learners. This platform will support EL, RFEP monitoring and EL, RFEP intervention, reclassification, goal-setting, and collaboration between multilingual programs. Site administrators and teachers, effective July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at a cost not to exceed sixty-two thousand and ninety-five dollars and to be paid from the general site, general fund, Site Title One Fund. Questions or comments? Vote, Ms. Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and myself, another unanimous vote, thank you, board. Agreement with Apex Learning, motion and second, you're falling behind.
So moved, second.
Approve a renewal agreement with Apex Learning for unlimited licenses at all high schools and for any high school student, effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at a cost not to exceed a hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents, and to be paid from the general fund. When it says any high school student, I assume that means within the district?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I got a nod, thank you. Okay, questions, comments? Ready to vote, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
O'Kelly?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Montez?
Aye.
And aye, unanimous. H five, agreement with Innovate Ed, motion and a second?
Moved, so moved?
Second.
Thank you. And this is to approve a three-year renewal agreement with Innovate Ed to conduct fifty-seven service, service days of district principal and leadership team coaching sessions with a focus on literacy at all secondary schools each year, effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at a total cost not to exceed five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars over a three-year period. Each year would be a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and those are twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty-three and twenty-four. Each year a hundred and seventy-one thousand, total of five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, to be paid from the general fund. Questions or comments, board?
I have some.
Yes, Ms. O'Kelly? We were on a roll, too. We were on a roll, too.
Sorry. This is a very pricey proposal, it's over half a million dollars. And I, I need some more details, I need, first of all, I need to know what the accountability's gonna be, how many people are gonna work with each school and how often? It said fifty-seven days, but I don't know what that means. We also have the price of substitutes for them to be able to implement this. Why is it for three years? Do we really need that? What do we expect to gain? And can't we use our own people? Every middle school, as well as Carter and Eisenhower, have a reading specialist as well as a literacy coach. Why are we not using those people to develop the strategies we need to improve literacy? I mean, I think that's what they were hired for. You know, literacy isn't just language arts, it's all subject areas. To be able to learn, you have to be able to read. The emphasis here appears to be on writing, but they can't write if they don't know how to read. So I, I need more than I've been given here.
Dr. Chavez is coming up to the mic? You're wearing a path in the carpet, you know?
I am. So, Ms. O'Kelly, great, great questions, and I agree with your concern. So I agree, there needs to be a little bit more depth and explanation. So literacy exists on a spectrum, right? And for our little ones, it is that reading component, right? And that's why we have our initiative of every student by the third grade being a reader. But as that spectrum continues, right, at the secondary level, it should be that output, that reading analysis, that comprehension, and then finally putting those thoughts, that comprehension and reading analysis into their own writing. And that writing should be across the curriculum. And so, you know, you being a high school person, a high school principal, you know the, the vastness of a task that that would be to, to do on your own as a site principal, to do it on your own as a site administrative team, and even just that new reading specialist or ELA coach. And so we are hoping to partner with Innovate Ed so they can support the administrative team, the EL coach, and the reading strategist in building that capacity internally so that we can do that writing across the curriculum. That is so tough to do, you know, unfortunately, when we talk about literacy, it is that myth that it lives with the ELA department, and that's not. That is a skill that our students need to be able to do in all the subject matters because that's the way that they share their learning, right? And in, in science, they're reading, and then they're explaining what they know about it in writing. Same thing in math, even more so nowadays with a lot of the word problems, right? And that comprehension around the word problems and their rationale and being able to put that in, in a writing format. And so to be able to do that in a high school campus that has two thousand, four hundred kids and over a hundred and twenty sections in many cases, you know, a staff of a hundred teachers, it is a huge endeavor to ask of any administrative team or any single reading specialist or ELA coach. So we, we would like to be able to partner with this team so that those conversations could be strategic with, like you said, how many people? It would be a department leader from each department and the PLC leads from each department. And so you would have this holistic approach by grade level, by lead, by subject matter, so they could all be engaged in the conversation about how writing is applied in their area, right? And so that way, we could see that synergy and that depth in literacy across accounts.
Well, we've used Innovate Ed before, and I have not seen any data that says that they accomplished much of anything at all with our kids. So I, I was a high school principal, and I remember we had a whole bunch of kids that could not read, and therefore they could not write. So I have a concern putting a half, over half a million dollars into this without some direct evidence of success.
Now, I didn't see the description either.
So, outlining what, yeah, I know, but what you're stating, it's not
Not right.
in the description.
Right. Let me address with Ms. O'Kelly, what you mentioned. So, yes, we would be naive to say that every student is at that level where they can do the output. And so, to support that, we, we're gonna be hiring reading specialists, reading strategists, not only at our elementary, but also at our secondary schools. So, those reading strategists will not only, you know, work with the leadership teams to help implement the reading, the writing across the curriculum, but they will have four sections where they will be helping our students with, with reading. So, they'll be using programs like Read 180, the Knee House program, and working with those students that are at the lowest level. So, they're gonna be students that are gonna be identified that really can't read and can't move forward with their classmates with the writing initiative. Now, regards to the data, I think in the past, when we, when we embarked with Innovate Ed, it was a different approach, and there wasn't a laser-like focus in the way that we were gonna use them. So, we asked Innovate Ed, and we asked the site principals to work together, to collaborate, to have the conversations around instructional focus for their site, and then based on that, you know, move their schools on whatever instructional focus they decided on. That's not the case with the way we're planning on using Innovate Ed now. So, one of the concerns with the, with the, with the reading initiative at the elementary, that I heard from the secondary staff and the secondary principals is, you guys are doing all these great things at the elementary level. What are we doing for high schools and middle schools to support us in our literacy? And so, since most of the schools have been working with Innovate Ed and creating a writing focus, they thought it was a natural progression to really sit down as an administrative team at the secondary level and say, we are gonna use this for literacy, and we are gonna be looking at our data around literacy that is directly correlated to the IABs and the CAS. And so, along with this, we are going to create an umbrella of those IABs that really hit literacy, and that is what's gonna hold us accountable to this process. So, in the past, while we used Innovate Ed, and it's really hard to say that there's been a direct correlation between Innovate Ed and the academic growth of our district, every year that Innovate Ed has been a part of our district, we have seen a steady increase in math and ELA. Even though it is tough to say it's a direct correlation, because our district does a plethora of things to help move the scores.
How many schools are gonna be participating this time? All secondary schools?
All nine.
All nine?
All nine. So, five middle schools and four high schools.
So, that's 57,000 per school, when you divide that per school. My question is, Innovated, Innovated is going to be providing not just one employee, but multiple employees to help, their, their, their team members to help with the schools?
That's correct. So, the 57 days are gonna be for each school site, and we are gonna have coaches at the middle school level that work directly with the middle school teams, and then we're gonna have coaches at the high school level that work directly with the high school teams.
So, it says here that the first year, five middle schools worked with them in the 17, 18 school year, then in the 18, 19 school year, 13 more schools joined to work with Innovated, and then that number increased the 19, 20 year, the 20 schools. And this past school year, five middle schools and two high schools, Carter and Eisenhower, worked with them. So, I'm getting the idea that it's that year after year, the schools are choosing to work with them.
Well, they increased to more than 20 schools, and then it dropped down to five middle schools and two high schools.
Because the last year, we had the pandemic.
No, well, okay.
So, so, my, 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 well, it's not a concern, but it looks like the schools, if the schools continue to wanna work with them, all these schools are joining on, and that we've approved services with Innovated, Innovated year after year, obviously, they're doing something right. And if you guys are bringing these contracts forward for this company to help us, which we need the help, our students need the help, then it might not be such a bad thing after all, but I do like the bottom part where it says implementation and increased accountability. So, that, that has to be, that last word, accountability, has to be a big part of the service, so.
Will, will we receive ongoing feedback from them about progress that is being made?
So, absolutely. We can get feedback in a couple of formats. Obviously, their placemat and their drivers, so we could see that from each site. But more importantly, I think our kid's scores over time with the IABs. As you all know, our elementaries and middle schools use iReady to kinda gauge students' growth, and at the high school level, we don't have anything till the 11th grade, really, to see that growth. And so, creating a district-wide umbrella of IABs and saying, this is what we're gonna use, and we're gonna use it strategically around the focus of literacy, and that's what we're going to assess, I think assists us in being able to calibrate whether or not this is successful. I think the three-year span also speaks to the community, our administrators and our teacher teams, that, that this is something that we're committing to, and it's not going away. And they need to be part of the process. They need to embrace the process, and we are moving forward as a district with literacy across the curriculum at the secondary level.
These are.
Go ahead.
Um, these are all funds, you know, this is a three-year, three-year contract. Well, it's a, it's a three-year, we're, we're only ratifying year one. Is that correct? As I say, it's a three-year agreement, but we're ratifying year one, meaning we have the option to renegotiate or not, you know, or to terminate at, at the end of year one?
Sounds like it's set for three years.
No. So, that's what I'm, that's my question right now, because I'm looking at it as a three-year agreement. And the reason I'm asking that is because fiscally, right, we've got a lot of money that's come in that needs to be spent, like you have, you know, everything has had to come in, and you've gotta spend it by, I think it's like a year and a half from now, money's had to be spent. Are we using that money to do that? And then, again, are we lump summing this contract? Or are we taking the time to say it's a renewal contract, meaning upon, you know, satisfactory, you know, service, then we'll renew? So, those are like my two questions, 'cause the language here doesn't say, it says renewal. When it says renewal, that means you go back in, you know, not just a three-year contract period. So, I don't know who's, somebody.
That in the past.
Oh, I can make the decision, but.
So, this is a renewal because we've already had a contract with them. So, now it's a three-year contract. Now, I would need to see the actual contract to see if there's language that we can terminate at any time within a 30-day notice to the organization. I don't know if that's, like, it's pretty standard in all contracts.
Right.
But this one is for three years. And also, keep in mind, this is really structured around professional development.
Mm-hmm.
And to give our district a structure so that the professional development in this particular area, which is literacy, focusing on writing at the secondary level, is structured and consistent. The other piece, because the response has been great from the staff who has participated the last couple of years, we don't want to not bring it back. We made the adjustment as part of our K-12 literacy initiative, but we also wanted to give the staff the reassurance that we're committing to it and not to recycle, you know, programs every two years, and kinda send the message that we changed our mind every two years. And because it has worked for us, based on the response from the staff that has participated, now we want to tailor it to meet our specific needs moving forward with our literacy plan.
And, and that's fine. I just wanna know the funding. So, are we paying it all and lump sum them this year out of the funds that we have, or is this a, are we going back?
Divided it into each of the three years.
Each of the three years?
171.
It's 171,000 each year.
Which if it's seven, if it's 57,000 per school, per, for three years, which comes out to 19,000 dollars per school, per year.
Per P for the entire staff, correct.
Over three years.
Yeah.
Do you normally put a evaluation component in these types of contracts? Because just reading these briefs, there are never a evaluation component.
Well, that's what I meant by accountability.
Right, but, you know, it should be a formal.
Based on the results.
Yeah, but it should be a formal evaluation of the program that you're spending money.
Or it's not just an evaluation of the program and accountability of the program, but it's also accountability and evaluation of the schools.
And so, to answer that question, Mrs. Lewis, I think it was Ms. Walker, I believe, three or four years ago, that asked that any contract that came for renewal, that we accompanied it with some data to show that it's worth renewing. And right now, at least from what I'm hearing, and at least what I've heard, is that the, the staff, it was more feedback from the staff, perhaps not a formal qualitative or quantitative review of data, because the correlation may not necessarily be there, but just based on the satisfaction of the participants, that we felt that it was worth bringing back to give us, again, that direct structure that we need and commitment that we need for the next three years.
So, so another piece on the accountability, and I'm gonna read right off of our secondary literacy plan, to monitor, to monitor and increase accountability across all sites with writing across the curriculum. Part of this process, sites will be developing their own walkthrough protocols, which teachers will be part of the process of the look-to-learn process, right? So, if, as a team, they're developing these things that they wanna see in every single classroom, the way that students are engaging around the curriculum, right, and how their output should look, then teachers are going around and assessing each other and giving each team feedback around that, right? So, we're going to actually have that tangible data and walkthrough form electronically to, to give us some input as to how we're doing with writing across the curriculum at all our secondary sites. So, we'll have that point of data, we'll have our IABs, and then we'll have each site's placemat, which is really their process, to tell us how this process is going along. And I look forward to being able to present some really great data at the end of next school year around this process, if we move forward.
And it's, and when you break it down per school, per year, it doesn't sound as bad as half a million dollars.
Over three years.
Yeah.
Right. Wish I had half a million dollars over three years.
Okay, board, are we ready to move forward? Thank you, Dr. Chavez. Thank you, Dr. Avila. Okay, Ms. Walker, how do you vote to approve the agreement?
Aye.
Ms. O'Kelly?
Aye.
Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Vice President Montes?
Aye.
And myself, aye. I've heard great things in and out of Rialto about this program, this company, so I didn't want to say it ahead of time. Okay, H6, agreement with New House Education Center. Motion and a second, please.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you.
I think it's New Haas.
Okay, Haas.
Haas.
Approve an agreement with New Haas?
Owls.
Okay.
There's a U in there.
Okay, New, New House, New Haas Education, NEC. Okay, we're getting dingy. To provide professional learning in the area of reading and literacy to 165 reading strategists and first, second, and third grade teachers, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, at a cost not to exceed $274,535 and to be paid from the general fund, Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant. Board, questions, comments?
So, just excited about this opportunity to get teachers more support around reading and literacy at the early grades. My question is, is there an accountability measure around their actual participant, participation of the teachers and strategists and their implementation? Meaning, not just the sit-and-get, are they bringing it back to the classroom, are they bringing it, you know, and what's, what's the plan around ensuring that they're actually attending and then implementing?
I'll get Ms. Curtis off to come out and speak about that, if she's in the last few minutes.
She's like, no, I'm not, I'm here.
You forgot you were wearing it. Welcome and thank you for bailing us out.
Absolutely. Good evening, board, superintendent. And I apologize, I didn't know, I was coming down the hallway.
I hear you, I hear you. Uh, the question was, what is the accountability plan for specifically those teachers and strategists who are attending the training with New House, and then whether or not they're implementing? And so, what's the plan around making sure that they're doing it, and that this doesn't just become another expensive sit-and-get opportunity, but the kids actually get the
Yes.
the fruits of the benefits of this?
We are, you know, you saw the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant that came forward, and the literacy plan that we have in place that is so innovative and so exciting that we're finally, you know, building that foundation to success and truly providing that support and training. So, this is that training piece, and you're gonna hear some consistency to what you just heard. So, just as we have walkthrough protocols that we're creating for secondary, we'll also be creating those for elementary. And the literacy plan for elementary is based around balanced literacy. So, there's going to be those five basic balanced literacy pieces around reading, writing, and wordwork.
I'm gonna stop you right there for a bit. I'm good on that.
Yeah.
I just wanna know about the accountability. Like, when are there gonna be the check-ins to find out, you know, if we've got, what's the number, 165 staff are gonna be a part of it? That when is there the check-in to say, oh, we're at, 50% of our people have been in already?
Right.
And are they implementing the, what they learned in classrooms?
So, that accountability comes through my office, through me, through the district lead strategist, through our reading specialist, through our principals, the entire educational services department. We'll be doing walkthroughs with them. We'll also be using a reading screener with our students, so we'll be able to look at that data. We'll also be looking at iReady, so we'll be, we'll be able to see the benefits. And part of this contract is that teachers will be provided follow-through by the, by Knee House, Knee House themselves.
Oh, look, we had all.
That's how they pronounce it, 'cause I said Knee House as well, New House, and they pronounce it Knee House. So, they'll be providing follow-up and feedback to the teachers.
Okay.
So, they'll actually push in with some coaching and provide them feedback as well and support throughout the year.
Okay, so being able to actually see them implement, and then provide them coaching on what they're actually, what they've learned and then implemented. So, that's our accountability for that.
Yes, and all the walkthroughs and, you know, the reading screener and all those pieces coming together.
Okay, excellent. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The other piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Martinez, just so you know, so the other piece, as I shared a few weeks back, that we kinda did a self-autopsy of Ed Services, and one of the pieces that has not necessarily been present over the years has been, even at Ed Services, not having very structured meetings. And so, moving forward, part of the plan is to have, I believe, every other week, Ed Services meetings will not be operational, but they will focus exclusively on three or four data pieces that we're going to track throughout the year to exactly see whether or not everything that we said we are going to do is being done, and then looking at a very specific student progress data specifically for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'd like to, at least this is first year, at mid-year point, give us a, just a, how is it going for our staff? Meaning, are they finding it effective, and are they being able to use it? And then, hopefully, there's some outcome data for students as well. Just, I'm not trying to scrap any programs, I just wanna see the efficacy of something like that, right?
No, we would love that. And I believe those involved will enjoy providing that report to you all and celebrating the changes that have occurred from what they have learned.
Yeah, if we're gonna get to that literacy at third grade, we've gotta really be deliberate around these, these K-1s.
Absolutely, you're right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll bring that to you.
I meant to say forensic audit, not autopsy, okay?
You said, right, you were like, alright.
What program died, yes? Okay, here we go, board. Agreement with New House Education Center, NEC, and them. Okay, vote by board member is Ms. Walker.
Walker, aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
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 All right. Unanimous. And for the record, aye, okay. H7, and we've got 17 tonight, board, so.
Moved to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, this is an agreement with Think Together, Inc., to provide an after-school Expanded Learning Program at Fitzgerald Elementary School. And this is, approve a renewal with Think Together, a nonprofit corp, in the purpose, for the purpose of providing an after-school Expanded Learning Program at Fitzgerald Elementary School, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, at a cost not to exceed at a cost not to exceed a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and to be paid from the general fund. Uh questions?
Can I ask why Fitzgerald was not included anyway?
Because because it doesn't meet the qualifications for the grant.
Okay, okay, that's what I figured.
Demographics.
The demographics.
President Martinez, I did have a question.
Yes.
So my my question to the staff then is, okay, this is like year three or four, could we not, what's what's going on? I mean, no.
They didn't do last year though, right?
No, I, yeah, I understand, we are a different situation from last year. But I'm just saying, um looking, right, but I'm saying last year cuz we're we're in COVID, right? So it wasn't a big deal. But um I'm just thinking about inclusively, we're a Title I district. Why is Cussera still being singled out and is there an appeal, a waiver that we can apply to the Department of Education federally to include Cussera? Because we still have a high number of of um free or reduced lunch students so that we're not going back and adding another, you know, spending another two hundred thousand dollars on a school that can be encompassed within our state grant already, the state grant. Um so just, cuz there is a waiver, y'all, so I'm just, I'm I'm saying that, but I already know there's a waiver. So you need to investigate that.
Down the hallway, so can you please?
Oh, do I have to ask the same question again?
I know it's about Fitzgerald and it's about them being included in our grant.
Yes.
Is Cussera?
Fitzgerald.
I think she's I'm sorry, I meant Fitzgerald, I meant Fitzgerald, yeah, sorry about that.
So you wanted to do the research uh about including Fitzgerald?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and if there is, cuz there is a waiver because we are a Title I and if that's, this is our only outlier, um we should be able to apply for the waiver for a waiver for a Department of Ed to be inclu, I mean, actually, it isn't, it doesn't even matter about that. It's it's the state money, right? So to be inclusive, but there should be an opportunity for us to do that. And so we need to investigate that so that we're being able to use our state dollars across all of our schools and not keep singling this one school out? Because we still, and even that school has a high percentage of of free or reduced lunch, right?
I will I will definitely go back and do the research.
Okay.
Because it has the lowest.
No, 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 but they were already at sixty-something percent, what what, yeah.
But it doesn't meet, but it doesn't meet the threshold for the grant.
But we're a Title I district, this money, the ACES money is a state, is a state uh state grant. And because our entire district and just that one outlier, and if they're already at a higher level, we can apply for a waiver to have them included. So that so that they're not excluded, that's what I mean, so that they're not excluded.
Well, we're not, well, we're adding them in anyway cuz we're paying for it.
So that we do not have to pay and then have to pay for this. We would be contracting, so if we're doing a a contract.
Out there, yeah, we gotta go get it.
No, we already have the grant, it's so that that
Look at the difference in in the wording.
I meant the waiver.
In H seven, they're calling it an after-school Expanded Learning Program at Fitzgerald. And in H eight, it's to provide uh after-school Educational and Safety ACES Program.
Because those schools, our other schools are covered under the ACES grant, the state money.
Right.
Uh Fitzgerald is not covered because it did not have, at the time of qualification, it did not meet the percentage of free or reduced lunch numbers to to be included in the ACES grant at that time, right? So but now, I'm just saying that because we are an entire Title I district, we are a Title I district, we should, and that's our only outlier uh for this project, uh for this for this contract, we should be able to uh requalify or get a waiver so that uh Fitzgerald will be included in that, so that we're not paying an additional two hundred dollars to have this con contracted company come in and provide a one-off, right? That should be included in there, that's all I'm saying. So there is, and there is
So I'll do the research on the waiver piece.
And so we can save that money on the other end. We may not be able to do it this year, but please look it up so that we can.
Is there time to put that item on hold?
Um we can, because what we can do is if we pull this one, I can do that investigation about the waiver and then um if we can't get the waiver, then we can bring this back to the next board meeting cuz it wouldn't start till school starts, so this one can be passed.
Would that include pulling H eight then?
No, because it is the grant.
Normal grant.
Okay, so board, if I understand right, your pleasure is to pull H seven or table it till a later time?
Yes.
Yes, we'll bring it back before um school starts and I'll do all the investigation on the waiver piece.
And then just don't let them stop you at the waiver cuz there's an appeal too, cuz I, yeah. Okay, no, I've already looked it up for another district that I work, so I already know that it's possible. So let's save ourselves a quarter million dollars.
I love this board, nice, diverse, knowledgeable, asking the right questions. Thanks for giving me a great board, public. Okay, H eight, agreement with Think Together Inc. to provide after-school Educational and Safety ACES pro program. Motion and a second, please.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, and this is to approve a renewal agreement with Think Together Inc., a nonprofit corporation for the purpose of providing the after-school education and ACES program at eighteen elementary and five middle school sites in the district. Total annual cost is not to exceed a hundred percent of the grant amount of three million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
Forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay, three million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two and to be paid from the general fund. Board, questions, comments? Hearing none, Ms. Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
Ms. Lewis? Okay, Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye, unanimous, thank you, board. Okay, H nine of H seven, of seventeen of them, so bear with us. Agreement with Tutor.com. Motion and a second, please.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. And this is to approve an agreement with Tutor.com to provide a pool of two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and tw, I'll get it yet, two thousand, two hundred and eighty hours of individual virtual tutoring services to approximately a thousand English learners to address the need for learning acceleration in grades K through twelve effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two at a cost not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars and to be paid from the general fund. Questions, comments, board? Ms. Walker, how do you vote?
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes, sir.
This is, is this an online service?
It's a dot com, I assume it is.
Virtual tut tutoring, yeah, so it's online.
Aren't the kids getting up already, virtual learning already?
We still have people that are in hi, gonna be in hybrid.
Well, that's what I was saying, why don't we just open it up when the state allows us to?
Some people want to keep hybrid. Some some kids learn better that way.
Some kids do better.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um but get back to this item. Uh Tutor.com, I've never heard of it come across the district before.
Doctor Madrid, thank you.
Good evening, I'm sorry I missed the question.
Okay.
You guys are gonna be in such good shape.
Tell us about Tutor.com.
Okay, uh okay, so um Tutor.com is an online service uh that provides tutoring to students uh twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And so um it's on-demand tutoring. Uh they do have um specialized tutors for English learners that have um training in how to work with English learners. And um they have over seventy subjects available. Uh twelve of those subjects, the core content areas are available in Spanish as well if the student uh chooses to use their services in Spanish.
Vice President Montez, did that answer your question?
And is the ser, uh so they can use the service during school?
Well, we're not going to encourage them to use it during the school day. They'll they'll be using it um after the school day, uh but they can also use it on the weekends. And it is a twenty-four-hour service company, so um you know, if we have some older students that
I mean, they could use it during lunch and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, they could use it during lunch, um if they had access to it over their telephone. But it is um
First time that uh the district's considering using a service like this?
This is the first time that multilingual programs is contracting a service like this, but we do have another contract that um our special services department um is using with them. And so they came highly recommended.
So your kindergartens are half-day or full-days?
Uh kindergarteners um are, I think it's three and a half hours.
Yeah, so this could be a supplemental, especially for English learners.
Are we going to block this from internal, so we don't have open book exams?
Oh, they'll do that anyway.
Well, they don't, they're they're not using our curriculum, they're supporting students in their learning.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Board, how do you, uh, okay.
Walker, oh, are you calling?
Yes, please.
Walker, aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
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 And aye, unanimous. Makes it nice and easy on you, Martha. Okay, agreement with Blackboard Inc. Motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you. And this is to approve a renewal agreement with Blackboard Inc. to assist with communication with all education stakeholders for general and emergency needs effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two at a cost not to exceed ninety thousand, four hundred dollars for web service and communication, voice and text, broadcast platform to be from the general fund Title I centralized service. Board, questions, comments? Uh Ms. Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye, unanimous, thank you, board. H eleven, agreement with McGraw-Hill Education Assessment and Learning in Knowledge in Knowledge Spaces Alex Online Math Support. Motion and a second, please.
So moved?
Second.
And this is to approve the renewal agreement with McGraw-Hill Education to provide fourteen fourteen thousand licenses for the online Alex program for students in grades six through twelve effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two at a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and to be paid from the general fund. Questions, comments, board? Ms. Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
O'Kelly?
Aye.
Uh Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye, unanimous, thank you, board. H twelve, annual software license and maintenance EduPoint Educational Systems LLC. Motion and a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And this is to approve a renewal agreement with EduPoint Educational Systems LLC for the annual software license and maintenance of the district's Student Information System, Synergy. This includes online student registration module and Synergy Technology Toolset Software effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two at a cost not to exceed a hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and to be paid from the general fund. Questions, comments? Um I hate to change it now, so uh let's keep it, this is my only comment. Ms. Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
Lewis, aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Montez, and myself, aye, unanimous. H thirteen, memorandum of understanding with California Climate Action Corp. Uh motion and a second, board?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. This is to approve the memorandum of of understanding, M O U, with California Climate Action Corps to have three C C A C fellows assist in climate-related projects at no cost to the district, effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Questions or comments, board?
What are fellows? Are these representatives from this organization?
Yes.
Fellow checking.
Okay, um vote, Ms. Walker.
Aye.
O'Kelly?
Uh aye.
Uh Clerk Lewis?
Aye.
Uh Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye, thank you, board, unanimous. H fourteen, resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-one, full-day kindergarten facilities grant program, Casey Elementary. Motion and a second, board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Been working on this for a couple of years now, thank you, Dr. Avila and Rialto family. Okay, adopt resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-one to provide full-day kindergarten instruction at the following site, Casey Elementary School pursuant to education code eight-nine-seven-two and eight-nine-seven-three to begin by the start of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Questions or comments, board?
I think it's great, so post three and a half hours, we're gonna get
A whole day?
Yeah, Ms. Walker?
Uh I just wanted to know, how many full-day kindergartens do, will we have uh for twenty-one, twenty-two?
Mohammed? And is Beth Curtis?
Get ready to repeat the question.
It's going to be specifically this one, so everything was put on hold because of COVID because the entire cohort that was going to get us started this school year did not receive the the necessary training. This uh funding had to be or had to be implemented by uh this coming school year. And so we did put in for a waiver which was granted to delay it a full year, but we decided that even in spite of the waiver to delay it, we want to implement it at some point during the year once we provide the addition, the necessary training for this group. The rest of the cohort will follow for the following school year.
For twenty twenty-two? Okay, so my question um is, how many full-days kindergartens do we have for twenty-one? And then now it looks like the projection for twenty-two? And then if you if you have that number for the projection for full day for next for next year?
Good evening, um board, President Martinez, esteemed board, Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name's Eva Serrato, um academic agent, math, science, college, and career pathways. And right now, we have no full-day kindergarten classes. Uh but as Dr. Avila was explaining, uh we did receive grant funding for Casey and um we definitely will um implement full-day kindergarten for Casey and we're expecting to implement uh full-day kindergarten at five additional schools. And because those five have the um, they've met the standard of having restrooms in the classroom.
Okay, and that's
Which which classrooms, if you don't mind, which schools, I'm sorry?
Uh let me see here, I have the list.
I know some people that wanna know.
And we tried to, uh based on the facilities, but also to have them throughout the district to give access. And then also, if I remember Mohammed, there's another round of uh proposed funding that will be coming that we will then uh apply for more uh direct funding for the schools that don't have the facilities in place at this point in time.
So in addition to Casey, uh the five other schools are Dunn, Henry, Cordiac, Morgan, and Werner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's my last question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm still trying to write them down.
It was Casey, Warner, Dunn, Henry, Cordiac, and Morgan.
Oh, one more question while you're here. So are these the same sites that will have the pre-K?
TK.
TK?
Uh the TK, um it depend, I don't know the list of schools that have TK, but it's completely separate program.
Thank you. Excited to service our uh community, the better, the more the better, the more we can offer. Okay, uh other questions, board? Ready to vote, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
And Nancy?
Aye.
Okay, Clerk Lewis, thank you, Vice President Montez?
Aye.
And myself, aye, unanimous. H fifteen, resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-two, transfers of of appropriations for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Motion and a second, board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, ladies, for taking that up. Okay, and this is to approve resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-two, authorizing staff to process the necessary transfers of appropriations to revise budget amounts during the course of the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year to allow appropriation of excess funds, excess, I like that, transfers between designated and or unappropriated fund balances and any expenditure classifications or balance any expenditure classification of the budget. Board, questions, comments? Ready to vote, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
Clerk Lewis, thank you. Montez?
Aye.
And myself, Martinez, aye. Okay, H sixteen, we're almost there. Resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-three, Education Protection Account.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Approve resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-three, approving the plan to spend the monies received from the Education Protection Account. Questions or comments? Vote by board member is Ms. Walker.
Aye.
O'Kelly, aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, board, and mine was aye. Okay, H seventeen, resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-four, committed revenues and fund balance, motion and a second?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, adoption, adopt resolution number twenty, twenty-one, thirty-four in accordance with the provisions of with the provisions of GASB, yeah, GASB fifty-four, approving three percent of LCFF funding to support the continuity of the foundational literacy and numeracy initiatives as indicated by the committed fund classification, and funds cannot be used for any purpose other than directed above unless the governing board adopts another resolution to remove or change a constraint. Questions or comments, board? Okay, vote, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
O'Kelly?
O'Kelly, aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Montez?
Aye.
And myself, Martinez, aye. Unanimous, thank you, board. And adjournment?
I have a question just before we leave. Dr. Avila, just on, so I just heard we have one funding stream for kindergarten, is that, okay, I know a different funding stream for TK, and then I know our preschool is a different funding source. So at any, okay, I'm just confused about kindergarten being separate from regular, our regular programming and then, yeah.
So this kindergarten was just a grant.
Because that was a full day, right, full day. But generally from our general operating, when we make our plans, K is in there. TK is not?
TK is.
TK is, so our general operating budget's regular money, TK is part of the program now, program funding. Preschool is still a separate.
But what's it called, Iron Horse, or what's it called?
Rocking Horse.
Rocking Horse.
Rocking Horse.
Iron Horse.
Sounds like a country bar.
Branding iron.
I was close. So many programs, I can't remember them all. Rocking Horse. Rocking, Rocking Horse is the, is it the organization or the company that helps with TK?
It's the, that's for the preschool.
It's a preschool program. So to be clear, board, we have a state preschool program and we also have a district preschool.
Remember, funding was cut a few years ago, but we opted to fund at least, it was five classes or six classes.
Yeah, six classes.
From our direct fund so that those kids had access to preschool.
Okay, so the Rocking Horse program funds a portion of our preschool program, state preschool dollars paid for the other portion. TK is a part of our regular K-12 budget and things from that sort. Okay, I'm cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move for adjournment? Okay, it's coming your way shortly. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. at the Dr. John R. Casalunas Education Center at one eighty-two East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California, and also available to the public via YouTube stream. And check it out if you haven't. It's a lot of stuff on there. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meetings are available upon request from the superintendent's office.
Move to approve.
Uh, no.
Well, she bring a sleeping bag.
Okay. Student board member, Lopez, will you make a motion for us to adjourn?
Oh, that's right. I motion for us to adjourn.
Are we gonna let her use that gavel?
Bring her own gavel.
I get to bring mine?
Yours. And come around and you can.
Now you can second, that's okay.
Second.
Okay.
So hold on. Let's get your own squishy chair over here. Okay, your own squishy chair.
Move the water bottle though, so it looks cuter.
Wait.
Huh?
That is very remote.
Oh, my goodness.
You can take your mask off.
You want mine? Oh, I can take it off?
Yep.
Bam. Oh, this is my name, okay. We ready?
Okay, we had the preferential vote by our student board member. And let's see, vote by Ms. Walker.
Aye.
By, vote by.
Nancy O'Kelly?
Aye.
Stephanie E. Lewis?
Aye.
Edgar Montez?
Aye.
Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Time, nine fifty-one?
I call this meeting adjourned.
I call this meeting to adjourn. That's so funny. Oh, I'm not, I'm gonna hide that when I get home.
Don't let your parents take it away and go, no.
Thank you, everyone. Great board meeting.